Order, it is 2:02. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Here, present.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Present.
Thank you.
We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To lift the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of friendship among united cultures. Okay, standing. For our land acknowledgements. This Santa Fe County building is located on the traditional homelands of the Tewa people at the place known as Oga Pogae Shell Watering Place. We honor the land itself with all those who have deep connections to the land as Santa Fe County is committed to being in relationship with neighboring tribes, sovereign nations, and all those who remain stewards of this land throughout generations. Moment of reflection, Public Safety Richard Royball.
Let us take a moment to focus on the work ahead of us today. Being ever mindful of our decisions and in the best interest of the community, we take a moment of silence.
We also have a moment of silence from Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This moment of silence appreciates the life of Vicente Mendoza, who was 12. Yesterday, they laid Vicente to rest at Our Lady of Guadalupe, where services were held. This young man loved basketball, loved pizza, he made everyone smile. At 12, he did pass from his injuries in a house fire in District Two on the south side on January 27th. He passed on the 13th donating his organs, giving back to life and saving three lives. He was a student at Gonzalez Community School, and we honor him in this moment and his family.
Take a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. And... See, now for, we do have recognition for two others that we will do during the recognition of employees, okay? Manager Schaefer. So, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda other than what I mentioned with regard to recognition of those who will be recognized?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, no, there are no recommended changes from staff to the agenda as presented, which I would note was posted last Tuesday at approximately 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. We have a motion to approve the agenda as provided.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the agenda has been approved. Years of service, retirements, and new hire recognitions. Commission, I mean, I'm sorry, Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to recognize several employees who are experiencing significant anniversary milestones with the county as well as one team member who retired or will be retiring this month, and some new hires. Starting with significant anniversaries, want to acknowledge that the following employees are recognizing five consecutive years of service to the county during the month of February. Devon Baldwin in our Community Services Department, Ira Royball in our Public Works Department, Oscar Salgado in our Water and Wastewater Division of the Public Works Department, Dana Henderson with our Corrections Department. I also want to acknowledge that Dr. Mel Olivares is celebrating his 10th year anniversary with the county as the medical doctor in our Adult Detention Facility. And finally, Mr. Ignacio Dominguez is celebrating his 15th year with the county, currently serving in the Office of Emergency Management. So, want to celebrate those team members for their commitment to the county and our, and our community. Want to also acknowledge that Elizabeth Peterson with our COSAP program or Engage relative to our Community Services Department will be retiring at the end of this month, and I wish her all the, all the best in her next chapter of her life. Looking at new hires during the month of January, want to acknowledge that we have two new county commissioners who are scored as new hires on our list of, of new employees. So, welcome Commissioner Kakari Stone and Commissioner Fulton Johnson. We also have two, three individuals who are joining our Corrections Department. Javier Reza, I hope that I didn't butcher that too badly, Lisvia Guevara, and Randall Wilcox in our County Assessors Department. We welcome Brian Mendoza and the County Clerk Department, Gary Reed. We have several volunteer firefighters who are showing up on the list as, as new hires. While they're volunteers, that signifies that they have achieved a level of certification that qualifies them for our volunteer stipend program, meaning they're either qualified to fight interior fires, Wildland certified, or have their EMT basic or above. And appreciate the volunteer service of these individuals. Koba Jane Stephen Ramirez and Oscar Peon and John Seidner. In our Legal Department, want to welcome Walker Boyd, our new county attorney. In the Sheriff's Department, Brandon Baca. Also in the County Assessors Department, Dan Yon Welch. And then finally, in the Land Use Department, I believe it is Marvelous Yi Chang. So again, want to welcome all of our new hires, celebrate those who have been with us for five, 10, and 15 years, and wish Ms. Peterson all the best in her retirement. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer, and thank you all for your continued commitment to serving the public of Santa Fe County. Are there any comments or statements from the commission? No? Thank you all for your good work, and we appreciate that very much. Recognition of employees for awards, accreditations, recognitions, and other accomplishments. This is as well with County Manager Schaefer, but I'd like to ask Commissioner Kakari Stone to recognize those who are on a separate list today. I'm sorry?
There is an agenda item for that.
Uh, recog, rec, item?
That's 3A.
3A?
3A, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Then let's go ahead, we have a separate, oh, I see, okay. Then we can go ahead and do that agenda item, my apologies. No, I'm grateful. Recognition of employees, County Manager Schaefer, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Want to begin by recognizing 11 employees who earned certifications through the New Mexico Edge Program this year. New Mexico Edge is a fabulous program that is offered in partnership with New Mexico Counties. Its goal is to foster better government through education. Several, approximately two years ago or thereabouts, Santa Fe County partnered with New Mexico Edge to offer an accelerated pathway to county employees to achieve, you know, certificates. Amongst other benefits, if an employee pursues and receives the Certified Public Supervisor Certification, that qualifies that employee for any supervisory position at the county, even without any prior supervisory experience. It's just another way in which we try to continuously invest in our workforce and grow our own, so to speak, in terms of helping to train our team members to continue and further their career and provide, again, better government through education. So, I want to recognize the following four employees who earned their New Mexico Certified Public Official Certification. They are Michael Carr with the Public Works Department, and I believe if you're present, please come forward. Like us to get a group photo with the county commissioners if we can, because I know that they want to celebrate this achievement with you as well. William Donahue in the Community Development Department, Roberto Luhon in our RECC Department, and Julie Lynch also with RECC. We have three employees who earned the New Mexico Certified Public Supervisor Certification. That includes Emma Felton in the County Manager's Office, Ivan Berry in the Assessor's Office, and Catherine Clark, County Clerk. Finally, we had one team member who earned both a Certified Public Official and Certified Public Supervisor Certification, and that's Lucy Felton of the Finance Division. And we had three employees who earned specialized certificates. Jennifer Wilson of the Clerk's Office earned the New Mexico Certified Advocate for Public Ethics and New Mexico Certified Human Resources Professional Certificates. Gabrielle Schultz of the Clerk's Office earned the New Mexico Certified Advocate for Public Ethics Certificate. And finally, Victor V. Hill of the Treasurer's Office earned the New Mexico Certified Human Resources Professional Certificate. So, all of those individuals were invited to attend today's meeting. If you are present, if you could please stand up and come forward so that we can all recognize your achievement.
Congratulations to all of you. I spent quite a bit of time in higher ed as both an instructor and as a dean, and I always did that because there is nothing more beautiful to me in this life than a person who seeks to improve themselves. It is amazing. So, I am so grateful for all of you standing up and recognizing that the good work that you do in your community can always be better, and that you're doing something for yourself in the interest of helping others. So, thank you very, very much for your work on yourself and your willingness to serve those in our community. Very grateful. Any other comments from our Commissioners? Hearing that? The next item, thank you, Manager Schaefer.
I'm sorry, Chair Bustamante, there's one other accomplishment that we wanted to recognize. This is both a recognition of work that the county did, but also our design-build team was awarded the Eagle Award of Excellence from the New Mexico Chapter of the National Association of Industrial Office Properties in the Small Civic Public Project category. And this was for the new Regional Emergency Communications Center Construction project. So, the National Association of Industrial Office Properties, its mission is to provide the real estate development industry with a visionary, beneficial, and responsive association serving developers, owners, investors, and commercial real estate professionals. The Awards of Excellence honor outstanding achievements in commercial real estate, including innovation and community impact. Presented annually, they recognize exceptional projects, companies, and individuals across categories like office, industrial, and mixed-use developments. So again, want to congratulate both our design-build partners and county staff relative to this award. And I believe Rod Lambert is in, is the project manager for the project and would like to step forward and perhaps say a few words about the award and the plaque that would commemorate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, and we'll see this beautiful eagle next to you.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante, members of the commission. I'm Rod Lambert from the Santa Fe County Public Works Projects Division. I was the project manager on the Regional Emergency Communications Center. Our architecture firm, Southwest Studios, and our construction firm, Jane's Construction, one of them, we're not sure which, maybe both actually nominated this project for this award. And then we were notified that there would be the award ceremony on December 9th, so my supervisor Kurt Temple and I drove down and were pleasantly surprised to receive the Eagle Award, which was in the small division category, and that's for projects under $10 million. And it's kind of a regional, there were a lot of Albuquerque and Santa Fe projects, but it was also farther-reaching throughout the state. So, we were honored and blessed.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any comments? Would you please hold that up for us? Oh, now you have to lift and pull down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Anything else, Manager Schaefer?
No, thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you. Approval of the meeting minutes from January 28th, 2025. Do we have any comments, concerns, changes, or a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 28th?
I have a comment. So, in reviewing the minutes, it seems that the posted version was every other page. If you take a look at, it goes from page five to seven to nine. So, I would move to delay the approval of the minutes until all of them are posted because they cut off mid-sentence. They're not complete in the record as they stand.
So, we have a motion to?
And I'll, and I'll second that to table these.
Motion to table the minutes until we get the pagination correct. We have a second from, uh, Bike Johnson, a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, we will revisit those minutes at a future meeting. Consideration of Commissioner Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Other Items. Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Sheriff Mendoza, Under Sheriff Johnson, Major Gonzalez to the podium here, as well as our recognized deputies Vallejos and Levi Abeta. Please, and feel welcome to come up with your family. Thank you. This certificate of appreciation is awarded by the Board of County Commissioners, Santa Fe County Board of County Commissioners, to deputies Vallejos and Deputy Levi Abeta. While we are sleeping, our law enforcement is awake 24/7. They do not rest, they never get a chance to exhale. Maybe, hopefully they do from time to time. But they're busy saving lives, they're busy making sure that we're safe and that the total community is safe. Sometimes when we save lives, we give families respite to be with their loved ones for a little longer, even if they pass. The child who passed that we acknowledged earlier is truly grateful for the moments and the heroes that saved him. And he had time to be with his family, and his brother was saved and still alive. On January 27th, deputies Abeta and Vallejo arrived at a fully engulfed house of fire in District Two. They broke windows, they inhaled smoke from the home, and they themselves suffered from smoke inhalation. They pulled the one child from the home, rescued the other, and turned things around and turned off the propane so that the rest of the family and the community could be safe. Both deputies were assessed by paramedics and monitored in the hospital. Here, I present the recognition to Deputy Levi Abeta and to Deputy Rudy Vallejo. On behalf of Santa Fe County, we proudly present this certificate of appreciation and recognition of your bravery and unwavering dedication to your profession. And I don't know if Sheriff Mendoza wants to make a comment on behalf of these brave deputies.
Madam, Madam Chair and Commissioner Kakari Stone, I just want to thank you for the recognition and acknowledgement of these two deputies and which I personally and this department are super proud of for going above and beyond and their selflessness in reacting. And if, if anybody gets a chance, we'll, we'll try and post a video, but to just see the video and the lapel of this heroic action and how these deputies just sprung into action and relied on their training, relied, relied on teamwork to, you know, rescue and make sure that these children were safe. And, you know, I don't want to go without recognizing another hero, and that is Mr. Vicente Mendoza, who passed for his donation of organs and his continuation of life. Want to recognize that also, but I'll, if it's okay, Madam Chair and Commissioner, if I can open up the, pass the mic to these two deputies for just a word.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. I'm Deputy Abeta. I was the first person on the scene. Just a little bit about the actions of what happened that night. I arrived on scene first. I was the closest one to the fire. I informed our dispatcher, R U C C, that the home was fully engulfed in flames. When I arrived, I ran immediately straight to the trailer. And when I got to the trailer, I started calling out, you know, Santa Fe County Sheriff's Office. Can anyone hear me, anyone inside? Didn't get any response. From that moment, I started doing a perimeter check around the house and located an open door. That door was covered in blood, which we later found out was the oldest son, Efren, who had punched out the window to be able to get out of the house. He was able to exit the house, but he was still, at this time, missing within all the smoke. At that time, I didn't know that he had gotten out. And so I actually went inside partially through that door to see if I could see anyone near the door or just in the near vicinity. And that's when I started suffering from smoke inhalation. It's not worth another person to go down and be another person to have to save. I backed out, kept calling, and I heard a voice in the distance. That voice in the distance was Efren. He was able to extract himself from the house, and he was standing on the far side of the property where all the smoke was going. I kept calling out to him. I did eventually find him and escorted him back to safety where my unit was, to where paramedics and other deputies who were arriving on scene could find him. Once then, I ran back to the house, started breaking out the windows, and Deputy Rudy Vallejo arrived on scene. We came up with a plan and opened up the front door. Couldn't find anybody. We tried to go inside, but the roof was already collapsing on us, and the flames were coming right at our faces and the smoke as well. From there, we backed out of that portion. Deputy, I started going around to the opposite side to just double-check, you know, see if I could see anything now. The smoke was just really, really bad. At that time, I told Deputy Vallejo to check one window that had been overlooked due to the smoke because you just can't see in those types of situations. I ran around to the back, turned off the propane, let the firefighters know what the situation was and what was going on. As I came back, Deputy Vallejo was able to gratefully open up that window and pull the child out to safety, Vicente. And we just got him to paramedics at that time.
Good afternoon, Board. I want to thank you for recognizing our efforts to save Vicente. I want to really thank you for recognizing Vicente's heroism. You know, I've said it many a times, the hero of this story is not myself. It's Vicente and his parents. You know, I want to thank the Lord our God for keeping us safe and putting us where we needed to be at that time. To give up your child to save other lives, it takes the love of God, I believe. You know, I was asked that question, if I can give up my son for complete strangers. My answer is always no. Estrella Urquidi and Alejandro Mendoza gave up their son. Vicente gave up his life, and he saved three people, to include a child in California. I just want to thank you guys for recognizing him during this. And I want to thank my wife for supporting me. You know, this isn't my first critical incident, and they do take, it's hard. And I am very grateful that I have a loving wife that supports me and stands by my side. An 11-year-old son that recognizes the sacrifices his dad makes as a law enforcement officer. An administration that looks out for their deputies and takes care of us mentally and ensures that we are okay to go back to duty. And thank you for recognizing our efforts, not just of mine and of Deputy Abeta, but of the Sheriff's Office in its whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, did you want to give them the certificates? Thank you all. Does anyone have any comments? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an amazing moment of recognition, and it's also a very somber moment because we didn't get everyone out alive. But that young child and his family offered organ donation, which I hope we all do for, you know, the unfortunate situation. But gentlemen, you guys showed, like, running into a burning building is really a feat of heroicism that we have to acknowledge and we are acknowledging here, and it's amazing. And I hope if there's anything that Santa Fe County can provide to you, like, because if this was your first critical incident, maybe yours as well, you know, this is, I hope that you rest well and you're able to absorb this through training and therapy and whatever you need to be able to not have to live this in memories. These are very traumatic experiences. And I hope if there's anything that Santa Fe County can do to help anybody, you, you too, but anybody that responded to any of these sorts of situations, please seek the assistance that we can provide to help you any way you can. And thank you so much for doing what you did and getting back up on the horse and being, you know, back at work soon thereafter. So thank you. Glad to see, thank you, Sheriff, and thank you. And thank you, Madam Commissioner, for recognizing this. Cheers.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I just want to add my thanks to, I was a search and rescue volunteer, and I experienced minor trauma. You experienced major trauma, and I appreciate the bravery and that you will take the time to get better. But thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, just to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Courageous act, and it's an inspiring one. And I really want to thank the department for the support that they give to their officers. And you guys are truly, we can tell just by seeing you, a team. And keep up the good work. We really appreciate it.
And thank you to Commissioner Kokari Stone for recognizing them. It's important to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Kokari Stone, did you have anything else? I would like to also thank you. I appreciate, it is not lost on me, and I think about you all often, that when you get up in the morning, every time I see a person in service, that you don't know what you're going to face that day. And I could never share the gratitude that I have in my heart for everything you do just leaving the house and for your family members who understand that when you leave the house, you're going to come back home safely. It's a question every day. And I'm so grateful for your good work. Absolutely could never say it enough. So I echo the gratitude in this room and Commissioner Green's words that there is support. It is difficult to do this work, and we're so grateful for your service. Thank you.
Madam Chair of Commission, thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you. It may seem like a minor formality, but I'm giving you a virtual hug from here. I feel like that's what I should be doing. Apologies. Okay, thank you very much. Onto our next agenda item.
Madam Chair, we do have one more recognition.
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kelly, thank you.
Please.
This is both a moment of reflection and recognition. I'm going to invite Chief Black and Assistant Chief Blay to come forth, please. Thank you. This is a moment to honor the life of Santa Fe County Fire Department Engineer Justin Senna. This is the anniversary of Justin Senna's passing on February 19, 2024. And as we just witnessed, being in the front lines means sometimes sacrificing your own well-being in life. And in this case, this was a long, difficult battle for Justin Senna, who suffered from behavioral health, mental health challenges. Again, we recognize that many of our firefighters are more likely to die from depression, burnout, PTSD, or taking their own lives than from a fire. Justin's commitment to service began at an early age. As a teenager, he volunteered with La Santa Fe Fire District. He was selfless and sacrificed a lot. To protect his own community, he became a full-time firefighter who rose to the rank of engineer. His unwavering dedication to others was evident in every aspect of life, in responding to emergency, assisting patients, or standing shoulder to shoulder with his fellow colleagues and responders. His life and service remind us not only of the physical demands placed on firefighters, but on the job's immense mental and emotional toll. His passing is a solemn reminder of the struggles that too many first responders face in silence. Let's break open the stigma of the chain of the silence. And today, not only do we recognize Justin's life and service along with his family, Jacqueline and his daughter Addison and Brooklyn, but other firefighters. And as a county and as a community, may we stand together to support you and know that you do not suffer alone. My own grandfather was a firefighter and died a tragic death due to alcoholism. So we know that this plagues our community and our families, and we stand with you to promote your mental health and well-being. And I offer, invite you if you want to make a comment in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief Black?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, thank you for recognizing Engineer Senna. I know his family wishes they could be here if they were able to, and they truly would be honored to have this and his life and his legacy be remembered and honored here today. Engineer Senna was a dear friend and family member to all of us in our department. And he, his life truly was marked with a life of dedication and service as he volunteered, as he rose through the ranks, as he gave selflessly to the community, to his brothers and sisters and the members of our department. He also worked countless nights as an ER tech, serving the community in our local hospitals as well. He truly gave of himself over and over and over again. And yes, this was a tragedy. And we will continue to honor his legacy by serving our members and our responders and acknowledging the hardships that they face every single day, both physical as well as mental health. And we are committed to serve and take care of our members to make sure that they have a life outside of our department after retirement so that they can enjoy the community and the life that they've earned through their time of service. Thank you for taking the time to honor Engineer Senna and recognize his life.
Thank you, Chief Black. Thank you. Do we have any comments from the commission? Thank you. Being none. Thank you again, Commissioner Kokari Stone, for recognizing the service of these individuals. If there is nothing else under item 3, we will move to the consent agenda. Item A, requesting approval of the purchase of one brush truck and one tender utilizing the Cooperative Educational Services Agreement.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A passes. Five, Santa Fe County Board of Finance. So I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of County Commission meeting temporarily.
Move to adjourn and reconvene as the Board of Finance.
We have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the Board of Finance by Commissioner Green. We have a second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now adjourned the BCC and now in a finance meeting. Just like that. All right. Item A, we'll have a call to order. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Here.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Present.
Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone?
Present.
And Chair Camilla Bustamante?
Here.
Okay, request approval of amendments to Santa Fe County Investment Policy. County Treasurer Monsonadis.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, I have an echo. The Board of County Commissioners is being asked to approve the investment policy changes to include the local government investment pool. And this meeting occurred last week, I believe it was on Wednesday, to discuss the advantages for the county and the investment policy to have more investment potential with the LGIP. Short-term, we will be investing in, as we have been, short-term investments and making certain that the county is staying liquid in every way. With that, Chair, I yield.
Have any questions of the County Treasurer regarding this item? Sir, I appreciate seeing you. If you can please, I apologize, I don't know your name right off, but if you have some information for us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair Bustamante, and Commissioners. My name is Brian Olachey. I also work in the Treasurer's Office. I just wanted to give you a little background about the investment policy currently. Currently, the language in the investment policy limits us on what we are allowed to contribute into the local government investment pool. It's very small. I believe it's in the $1 million range, and our current portfolio is much larger than that. The LGIP is a fund, like a money market fund, that is managed by the State Treasurer and her staff. And it also includes collaboration from all the other counties that contribute to that pool. So the advantage that is as more counties contribute to that and have the higher dollar amount, all these other counties are benefiting from that as well. But with the amount of money that is available to invest into the LGIP, we are trying to change the language in the investment policy to allow us to contribute a larger dollar amount that's currently allowed. So I think as of right now, we are proposing that we are allowed to put up to 50% of the available funds that we have into the LGIP. There's still going to be some strategy to go through on how much we are actually going to move into that fund. But having that fund available to us and having a higher dollar amount still gives us the liquidity options that we need as far as requesting money back for any, you know, funding sources or revenue sources that we need for plans and programs that are going on throughout the county that need to be funded. So still tying up that money into the LGIP still gives us the access that we might need to have those funds liquidated at any time. So we're just asking to expand it and give us more flexibility with the amount of money that we have to use and to also help the other counties that are currently participating in the LGIP. So with that, I'll leave it for any questions that you guys may have for me.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Green?
Thank you. The 50% of our sort of non-active operational money, is there a reason for that high limit? That seems to be higher. Is that a benchmark that most counties and jurisdictions have?
Yeah, when we had the State Treasurer, Laura Montoya, come in and speak to us, she kind of left that benchmark for us about what other counties are- kind of left that benchmark for us about what other counties are contributing into the program. Again, there are smaller counties that don't have as many dollars to basically contribute to that. We're lucky enough at this point that we have funds to do that, but I think to start off, we're not looking to do 50%. We have an account right now that we're looking to have some changes with. They're currently in about in the $30 million range of our portfolio, and that's probably where we would start. That's nowhere close to 50% of what our portfolio currently is right now. So I think for, as a starting point, that's kind of going to be our kind of test subject there and see how that performs over the next six months, and then just reassess from there and see how it's working for the county and decide if we need to move it up or if we feel comfortable with how that's performing at that point.
Okay, thank you. And then if we have this large amount, but we have a liquidity, an ability to liquidate assets from that, it's 5% of the portfolio over how many days?
I believe the ask from the State Treasurer is to liquidate, you're asking? It was a 48-hour request.
For a certain amount. So is it based on an amount or a portion of our portfolio?
It's just, the larger the amount, the more advance they're going to need.
Sure.
From us. But we also have other parts of the portfolio, other investments that we do move around if we need to for revenue reasons, if we need to pull for a project or something like that. So that doesn't necessarily have to come from what we are putting into the LGIP, but it is an option.
So my concern is just on liquidity. If a certain amount, if we're putting 50%, if we get up to that point, I know, I understand that we're not going to get there, but we could, right? We're giving you authorization to get to there. Is that amount of money suddenly, because of that liquidity limit, is that, you know, what percentage of that portfolio would be essentially illiquid? Or, and how long would it take us to liquidate? And given the, you know, God forbid we ever need that 50% all at once, of course, right? But if we needed 5%, 10%, 20% of that, just to make sure that we have a liquidation timeline, that we know that if we need 15 days, if we need 30 days, if we need 60 days to get to a sort of known amount of money of a possible risk or a project, one, you can plan for a project, that's easy, but an unknown is something that, you know, what is that liquidity timeline for something that is kind of in a scope of a known risk? I mean, anything that is way out beyond, never happened before, you can't plan for the black swan, but you can, you can plan for the known, we've gone through this before, we needed $25 million. This would be no problem to pull that out in 24 hours. I'm using examples, I don't know that number for sure. But is that, that worst-case scenario of a known past risk that has come up, is that within the scope of this liquidity in this portfolio?
Yeah, from my understanding, from the conversations we've had with State Treasurer, it's 72 hours of what we need, if we need to pull the whole thing out, that we need to just give them the 72-hour advance notice. But the idea obviously is not to sell any of those at a short, right? So we're trying to give them enough information, enough time, that we are still either profiting or not losing anything on that. But we do have an option that gives us a two- to three-day break, that we can request that without having to wait the 60 days or 30 days that we have to. They were pretty straightforward with us on that it's still very liquid, we just have to put in the request within those two to three days.
The penalties for rapid liquidity?
There wasn't any that I remember. I think maybe Manager Schaefer can refresh my memory.
Do you have a request from Manager Schaefer to address this?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante, Madam Treasurer, and Brian. You know, I just wanted to highlight, you know, in the packet material, the time or notice required to withdraw funds is based upon the amount of the money being withdrawn rather than the amount of the money that, you know, as a percentage of money that is invested in the LGIP. And so as I understand it, from the Treasurer's Office and, you know, their guide to members, anything up to $30 million can be withdrawn on one business day notice. From 30 to 60 million is two business days. From 60 to 100 is five business days. And anything in excess of $100 million would be on 10 business days notice. And so again, it's very liquid in terms of the ability to withdraw funds. And relative to amounts invested, you know, I just underscore that, you know, there would be two separate limits. One is, you know, it looks at the amount of our portfolio, the other looks at the percentage that the county owns of the LGIP's assets, which is 5%. So that we're not overly concentrating risk in one money market equivalent. And I believe when the Treasurer and her team put the memo together, the assets under management was about $2 billion. And so 5% of that would get you to approximately $100 million in terms of what would be the upper limit. So I just wanted to add that additional emphasis on those questions that were asked by Commissioner Green. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. One last question just related to this. Is that 5% limit extended to all people, all municipalities that are in there? Or is that just our internal limit that we are putting as an internal guideline? So for instance, Bernaleo County is much larger than we are, and if Bernaleo County has 50% of their, you know, owns 50% of it, that is one big beast as an investor in this, are they limited to assert 5%? Or did they put a 10% limit or a 25% limit? Or just to know that, is there anybody that has an outsized investment portion of that portfolio?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Green, if I might interject, the, I'm not certain, because I did ask the percentages, I couldn't get that information from the Treasurer directly. So I don't know that we have an answer. I'll ask again, but I don't believe we have an answer to what you're asking right now, Commissioner.
So the 5% was our internal recommendation, was not the Treasurer, the State Treasurer's recommendation, and wasn't their own policy?
I would assume that each individual has their own investment policy with their own detail.
Treasurer Monsonadis?
Sorry.
I apologize, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Yes, that is correct. It's not a suggestion or set number by the State Treasurer's Office.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, we have two items. We have the request for approval of the amendments, and we have requests for the County Treasurer's strategy. And the presentation appears to have covered both items. Is there any additional information for us to take separate vote on each? So unless there is no further information, Treasurer Monsonadis, we will hear a motion to approve?
I think we need to do them separately. They're going to...
Yes, I am. I am doing it separately. Thank you for your input. Kidding. Request, we hear a motion to approve the amendment to the Santa Fe County Investment Policy.
So I move to approve the amendments to the Santa Fe County Investment Policy.
Second?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hughes, a second by Commissioner Kukari, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The amendments to the Santa Fe County Investment Policy will be changed. Item D, a request for approval to the County Treasurer's six-month investment strategy. Do we hear a motion to approve?
Treasurer want to present her six-month strategy to us?
Strategy that was just presented. There is no additional information on the strategy. We just heard the strategy. So we're voting on them separately, but we did get all the information for both.
I just want to make sure we heard it all.
Did you have any additional information regarding the strategy? No?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we will be, again, investing in short-term investments to make certain that our investments are staying liquid.
Thank you, Manager Mon, I'm sorry, Treasurer Monsonadis. All right, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Green, a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is no one opposed. Motion carries to approve the County Treasurer's six-month investment strategy. If there is nothing further, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Do we have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I will move to adjourn and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
A motion to adjourn by County Commissioner Justin Green and...
A second to that motion.
...reconvene as BCC, a second by Commissioner Kukari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now out of the finance meeting and back in a BCC meeting. Appointments and reappointments. Item Six, request appointment of three members to the Arts and Culture. Dr. Shadabi?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and respected Commissioners. I'm Leila Shadabi, Economic Development Specialist at Community Development Department. We are here today to request appointment of three members to the Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Council from Commission Districts One, Two, and Three. This item is being presented to the Board of County Commissioners to request the appointment of three members to the Art, Culture, and Creative Economy Council. These members will fill the three vacant seats for Districts One, Two, and Three, serving for 18 months. At its meeting on, excuse me, on December 9, excuse me, 2024, the Board adopted Resolution Number 2024-167, which established the purpose and activities of the Santa Fe County Art, Culture, and Creative Economy Advisory Council. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2024-167, the ACC Council will consist of 11 members, two members from each Commission District, and one at-large member. The ACC Council members will serve without compensation and will meet monthly or more often if necessary, to discuss and advise on art initiatives within the county. This meeting will comply with public notice, open meeting laws, and other county policies. Decision by ACC Council will be made by a majority of the members present at the meeting. Appointments to the ACC Council were presented to the Board at its regular meeting on January 28, 2025. At that time, eight members were appointed, one from District One, Anthony More, More, one from District Two, Nancy Satter, one from District Three, Kevin Box, two from District Four, Carla Sanders and Brian McPortland, and two from District Five, Mariah Byrne and Jenny Cooley, and one at-large member, Michael Lancaster. These requests to fill three vacant seats for District One, Two, and Three. Staff solicited letters of interest from general public through a press release issued on February 6, 2025, and received 18 resumes and letters of interest for these three districts. Thirteen individuals were determined to be qualified based on criteria outlined in Resolution Number 2024-167. And of these, eight candidates are from District One. One of them declined, Julie Shelton-Snyder. She just some days ago declined. Three are from District Two and two from District Three. We are here to request appoint three members from candidate list to fill these vacant seats for District One, Two, and Three on ACC Council. These members will serve for 18 months alongside the eight members appointed on January 28. And now, may I ask Commissioner Green and Commissioner Bustamante, Commissioner Kukari Stone, to introduce their committee members for their district? And I stand here for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Shadabi. So it is my understanding that we have each of us one appointment from the list that you've provided? Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes, actually, yes. One from District One, Anthony More. One from District Two, Nancy Satter. One from District Three, Kevin Box. And two from District Four, Carla Sanders, Brian McPortland. Two from District Five, Mariah Byrne and Jenny Cooley, and one at-large, Michael Lancaster.
Okay.
They are already appointed.
So, Manager Schaefer, do we entertain each one as a motion from each district to, or our attorney can inform us, so each Commissioner makes an appointment? Should we do that as a motion and we would all accept or vote on that? Or would they just appoint their recommendation?
I would need to look up the resolution language to understand whether it's a Commissioner making the appointment or it's the Board itself. But for purposes of making the appointment here, if you all are going to, you know, allow a Commissioner from a given district to choose the representative from that district and agree on an at-large member, I don't see why you all can't deliberate and make a motion for all five of those, for all six of those appointments and then pass the motion.
So make the appointment and then just do one motion?
But whatever the mood of the Commission is, if you want to take each district one by one, that's also possible. But it seems more efficient to me for, given the numbers that there's a few districts with only one applicant, so.
Okay. So in the interest of time, we would just take the recommendations from each district, and we will start with District One. The recommendations from District One?
Thank you, Madam, pardon me. Thank you, Madam Chair. After reviewing these and hearing from some folks that were able to, you know, give some input as well, my selection is going to be Mr. David Lindblum.
We have the recommendation from District One, David Lindblum. Recommendation for District Two?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. In addition to Nancy Satter, I've reviewed three additional applicants, and I'm recommending Pablo Ancona for District Two. Thank you so much.
We have the recommendation for District Two of Pablo Ancona. For District Three, after reviewing three applications, the additional recommendation or appointment would be for Pamela Sullivan for District Three. District Four?
Thank you, Manager. I believe I did them last meeting.
We're complete with District Four and District Five.
No more?
No more in District Five. Paul?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I just wanted to make a correction that it was mentioned that the at-large position was also being appointed, but that has already been filled. So I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. And the at-large has been filled. Thank you.
Yes, Michael Lancaster.
So I make a motion that those three people be appointed to the Commission.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Johnson. I'm sorry, I'll give enough time for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All three appointments are accepted. Thank you, Dr. Shadabi.
Thank you very much.
And by the way, thank you for reopening it and allowing us the time to solicit some more applications.
Very good. Thank you for moving forward. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Miscellaneous action items. It is 305. Request Approval Agreement Number 2025-0249-CORR with James Corp. Thank you, Bill Taylor.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, for hearing our presentation today or request. It was an action item. We have an agreement with James Corporation. It was listed in the announcement by the Chair, 2025-0249-CORR, for the construction and installation of 12 recreational pods at the Santa Fe County Adult Detention Facility. This is... This is utilizing a job order contracting, delivery, project delivery method. The Board in November of 2020 authorized and approved the county to utilize either design-build or the job order contracting project delivery method for this project. We have Jason Crichton from the Correctional Facility to answer any specific questions regarding the pods and the recreation yards, and with that, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners will stand for questions.
Do we have any questions for Bill or Mr. Crichton? Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you. I noticed, and you had mentioned, I think it was in here, that the pods are twelve by twelve, twelve feet by twelve feet, I just wanted to clarify.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Stone, they're actually a little bit larger, they're about a little over a hundred and eighty square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, any other questions?
Each.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I've seen them and they are rather small, more like cages, but they're something anyway.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'd also like to point out that we're spending two million dollars. It's an important project, but it is two million dollars. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Want me to read it?
It's up to you.
I approve seven A.
Okay, we have a motion to approve seven A by Commissioner Hughes, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Request for approval of agreement 2025-0249-CORR with Janus Corp passes, thank you for twelve pods. Item B, resolution adopting the Santa Fe County Open Space Trails and Parks Work Plan. Adeline Murthy.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Today I am presenting the Open Space Trails, sorry, Open Space Trails and Parks 2025 Work Plan and request your approval of that plan. In 2019, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved Resolution 2019-4, adopting the Open Space Trails and Parks Strategic Management Plan. This plan was designed to serve as a guiding framework for the implementation of the Open Space Trails and Parks Program and projects. It also included an initial work plan that identified priority projects for the first year of the plan's implementation, which is intended to be a living document that is regularly updated. Resolution 2019-4 directs staff to annually update the work plan to transparently and clearly define the projects and programs that will be the focus for the upcoming year. The projects are categorized into four sections that are consistent with the Strategic Management Plan, which are resource management, educational programming and stewardship, project development and implementation, and planning and program development. The work plan was developed through a collaborative process with the County Open Lands, Trails, and Parks Advisory Committee, or COLPAC. On January twenty-first of this year, COLPAC convened for a special meeting to review the work plan and provide a recommendation to the Board regarding priority projects which are highlighted in the work plan. And successfully implementing this work plan will require ongoing dedicated collaboration across departments with COLPAC and with community partners. So, thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Do we have questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Murthy. This is an interesting and impressive document, I want to shout out the Royal Honda Open Space on the cover, beautiful photograph. Couple of questions for you. Who works on the work plan? What's the sort of like workflow? What people, what folks are involved in that work plan's implementation?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, the typical flow is, so COLPAC meets quarterly and the last meeting of the year, which is November, I ask COLPAC members what their priorities are for the upcoming year, and that's included within the work plan. We also, of course, work with Public Works to list all the upcoming projects they have for the next year. It's primarily led by myself with input from other staff like the Resource Management Specialists, the Open Space Interpretive Ranger, Public Works as I stated, and of course, COLPAC's priorities.
So there's a significant amount of volunteer labor that goes into the planning portion of the work plan, is that correct? Through COLPAC, which is a volunteer organization.
Right. I'm not sure if it's a significant amount, but there is definitely volunteer work to go into the creation of the work plan.
And so how many in your direct team? Is it three, a resource manager or specialist, or four maybe?
Yes, in the Open Space Planning Division or team, it's three members.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It's, I am a big fan of Open Space Trails and Parks, so I was excited to see this document and you have a lot of work ahead of you, but it looks really promising for our county.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes.
Yes, I just have a question. How far along are we on Thornton Ranch building the trails?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Hughes, we are currently working with BLM to finalize the environmental assessment, and we have meetings with them planned for the year, and this contract just was reinitiated after being on hold for a few years when the field office that we're working with didn't have an open space planner on staff. So now we have reinitiated this process and we will have meetings, I think on a monthly basis, starting in a few weeks with them.
How long will it take them to do the plan, or whatever they have to do?
I really can't speak to BLM's timeline, and we're considering phasing the project so that we begin to build trails that aren't contingent on this BLM piece.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, the original vision was for it all to happen at once, but there's been such a delay that we're thinking of taking that strategy.
Okay, so trails would be, trails not contingent to them would be done, started now or started when, this summer?
I'd have to program the project management with Public Works, I'm not sure what their schedule would look like at this time.
Okay, I won't plan on hiking there for a few months.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Adeline. So how do we solicit projects in, first question, so, yeah.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, projects from the community go through the county's ICIP process. So, for example, I received an inquiry from a community member in Rioan Medio who would like to see improvements to the park in Rioan Medio behind the community center, and I let her know about the county's ICIP process. We're actually having a community virtual meeting tomorrow evening to tell community members about that process, and they then submit a scoping form which is entered into the county's CIP database that is then reviewed and scored by the Capital Improvement Committee.
And so that's for acquisitions as well as construction and capital improvements?
That's for capital improvements. Acquisitions go through a separate process that's governed by another resolution, and that can either come from community members, COLPAC members, or even staff, and it has to go through a COLPAC review process.
Okay, and then do we have, because I frequently hear from my constituents up in the North that there is almost no accessible, or very limited accessible, open space and trails in the North, and, you know, I think that there's opportunities for partnerships, whether it's with, possibly with the Pueblos, or possibly with the City of Espaniola, or for us to go, you know, to find some BLM land or other things. Is there any, you know, effort to sort of deal with some of these areas that are feeling neglected and if not, find a project for them, you know, maybe make sure that they're aware of what resources we have provided already, if they are mistaken?
Well, one thing that we are really trying to work on now is increasing public awareness about the county's open space program. We're putting a brochure together that we'll be printing in a couple of months that we can, so we can let people know about the different properties that are available to them. Of course, the North has a lot of BLM property that is open to the public. And another thing we would like to do going forward is update the Strategic Management Plan to identify areas that would benefit from more trails and open space, not only from a conservation standpoint, but also equity standpoint.
And so is that Strategic Management Plan and sort of a master plan for the county in this work plan, is that part of this year's plan?
It is, let's see what item it is. It's the first item in Planning and Program Development, began developing a strategic plan for future trail and open space acquisitions that include elements such as connectivity between existing trails, wildlife habitat, conservation, and equity.
Okay, I would hope that we can make, you know, this outreach and both to solicit ideas to try to bring new properties on board, but also to make what we have our resources already available out there, and additionally to find a way to partner, you know, whether it's something within the City of Espaniola, as we've gotten a request to support a park in there. The City of Espanola is paying upwards of a million and a half dollars to upgrade a park, but they're a little short on money and have asked Santa Fe County to potentially build a playground, right, and to buy the playground equipment up there, and that would be a very definable aspect that would, you know, we wouldn't have to manage, but it would be part of our strategic plan to partner as well as have these resources still in Santa Fe County, but within the jurisdiction of Espaniola, as we have within Santa Fe with the River Trail or the Rail Trail. These things are within the city of Santa Fe, but they serve Santa Fe County as a whole, and I would hope that we would look for partnerships there. So, one of the things that I brought up in past meetings is making sure that we have access plans in any acquisition, or in, if not immediately at acquisition, definitely a plan to make sure that access is either planned for, or if it is inappropriate, at least defined, like if there's a property with cultural heritage properties, I get it, that gives an excuse for why not to have access or to have limited or restricted access. But I get worried that we get ahead of ourselves when we acquire properties and then they just sort of get fenced off and they just become sort of those pretty places, which is great, but I really wish that we had trails and rangers and ways to make sure that we have access. That's part of this plan, to make sure that we have access laid out for all of our open space?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, it's not directly a part of this work plan. It's not explicitly stated, but a big part of the work plan is building out the county's ranger program, which really helps with access.
Okay, great, well, I hope that we come forward with some capital improvement projects to make, whether it's trailheads or whatever is necessary in all of these properties. Last question I have is, when we buy property and it is a bigger than necessary property, maybe, like thousands of acres, right, or hundreds of acres, and the goal is, can be achieved in open space preservation in a fifty, sixty, seventy percent, maybe eighty, ninety percent, like we had the project in Golden and things like that, where we have multiple priorities in the county, and open space is one of them, but we also have housing priorities, we also have a variety of different priorities here, and I use housing and open space as things that can conflict, but they can, we can solve two problems with one solution. So I give an example of, you know, if you're going to preserve some property and the goal can be met for a wildlife corridor or for some cultural heritage area, but that some of the property could be used to solve our housing shortage here, I'm wondering if somewhere in this plan we could add, looking at alternative mechanisms to finance and to acquire property with dual goals of both preservation of an open space plans and recreation plans, but also potentially putting a goal of solving whatever, sustainability things, solving housing issues, whatever are other strategic goals of Santa Fe County, and so I'm wondering if there's a place in this work plan to look at alternative financing or acquisition methods, so it isn't just a pure money out thing, but it has a money out and the potential to generate some income to offset at least some, or maybe even more than some of the acquisition property. Has that been thought about? Has that been presented to COLPAC at this point?
It has, Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, yes, COLPAC discussed that in length during the San Pedro acquisition, and they essentially decided that it would be tricky for them to be tasked with that because they are experts in open space trails and parks, not in housing, and so it's hard within that committee to be able to make those types of decisions because they lack that expertise. And also COLPAC decided to recommend to the Board for the county to remove development rights from open space properties as a way to allow higher density housing in the county's defined growth areas.
Okay, and I understand when you're talking about a small number of acres, that probably makes sense. When you're talking about thousands of acres, there's probably a middle ground in there, and I know that my appointee, Daniel Alvarado, last year, he comes from a planning and a growth expertise area, so I think that we need to start looking at these alternative methods to help finance and to make COLPAC a more sustainable model, both instead of a selfish, self-serving model, which is fine, we have that at goal, but that if they could carry some of their own weight and have some of that, whether internal, you know, expertise or have a consultant brought in whenever they're looking at a property to say what is appropriate to develop within a property, and in an effort to solve two problems with one solution. And so I'm all for it, I just wish that we were able to wear, you know, walk and chew gum at the same time and be able to solve two problems at the same time. But thank you, I mean, this is ambitious, I like it, I just want to take you another step further into that space of solving two problems, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson?
So I, what I hear is that Commissioner Green is proposing some sort of partialization of, you know, thousands of acres of property, taking some percentage of that. I guess I wonder more generally, when we acquire property, in, do we set terms on what we are going to use that for, or do we just suddenly own the property and then we determine use after? That may be a question for you, maybe a question for the manager, maybe a question for the attorney, does that make sense?
Yes.
In other words, if we buy a piece of property, we don't immediately, you know, slap some designation on it?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, the Strategic Management Plan that was approved by the Board in 2019, that lays out exactly what the properties are to be used for, and that's why that plan needs an update, new properties have been added, and so that's the document that we work off of that states what all the properties are going to be utilized for. Also, when a new property is acquired within the acquisition application, it asks the applicant to provide their proposed use of the property, and when COLPAC makes their recommendation to the Board, they can also recommend terms and conditions.
So what leeway would we have to change to the use or to make it more flexible? Because I think, you know, what Commissioner Green is getting at is not, in principle is not, in principle is a good idea in the abstract, not for use in every case, but, you know, if we, parcels are carved up, not because they're perfect representations of a beautiful space, there are other uses that could be imagined in a particular space. So I guess I wonder about the flexibility of designation after the fact, after purchase.
Commissioner Bustamante, or sorry, Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, that would really be at the discretion of the board.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, unless the development rights are removed.
Right. But as we know, that process hasn't quite been fully launched. So pivoting slightly, I was looking at the annual report and I didn't find it a glance. You know, I didn't reread it in amazing detail. What are the use, can you share with us some use metrics if they're, if they are lucidly at the top of your mind? If not, it's okay. But I'm wondering how many people use our open space trails and parks, if it's possible to count them at all, in a year?
Commissioner Johnson, the only data point I have that is a solid data point is that 52,000 people use the Rail Trail in one year, I think it was 2023. And yeah, unfortunately, we don't collect that type of data. We, our interpretive ranger patrols trails on weekends and she interacts between 15 to, between 50 and 40 people during like the two to three hours that she is on a trail.
Okay. And she has a 2,000 square mile county to do that at?
Right.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it would be worth strategizing in the future how we can collect that kind of data. I won't, I won't ask you to brainstorm it now, but I think that's a good idea, so that we can show where we are using, because 50,000 people is a lot of folks to use that system. And I'm sure it's an undercount. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Thank you for your work. Thank you, Chair Bustamante. This might not be the place, but I echo the need for inclusion of more rigorous community input that's more broad-based. There's definitely the closing the nature gap is needed with communities of color, low-income communities and other communities who have traditionally been left out of land use decisions, been left out of planning capital projects. And I just want to represent District Two and other communities in Santa Fe County, who typically are part of that green space and open space. And if we can think about, as a county, creative ways to have more robust community inclusion and input, but also to assess or even do an impact assessment, do our communities really know where the open space and parks are, how to use them, look at transit barriers to get there? Are open spaces mainly being used by tourists? So we want the nature to, to really be available to our communities because that's what diversity, equity, and inclusion is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I'd like to point out to Commissioner Kakari Stone that Thornton Ranch involved a lot of planning and Tesuqui Pueblos were involved with that, quite detailed involved. And not only, you know, just to have access in general, but to have access for religious and their cultural purposes. And I was very impressed, and they were very impressed. They were grateful for the inclusion. So there is some effort in that direction.
Thank you. Thank you for the confirmation. I want to thank you for the document. The work plan is so easy to understand and I like the, the way you're showing us exactly what the status is based on the circles that are there. So I appreciate the work plan. And if there are no further questions, comments from Ms. Murthy, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Move to approve Resolution Number 2025-TBD. A resolution adopting the Santa Fe County Open Space Trails and Parks 2025 Work Plan.
I second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? What is your resolution number for us? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-025.
025. Thank you very much. Okay, it is 3:30. We're going to take a break. Let's take a 10-minute break and, okay, let's do 15-minute break. We will meet promptly at 3:45 for public comment.
Matters of public concern, subject to three minutes, or another time limit imposed by the chair. I have, how many people in the, from the public are here to speak? We have two in the chambers, and we have, how many online? One online? Two online, okay. Let's go ahead and start our public comments. If you will come state your name and your address for the, you don't have to do that for this? No, okay, thank you.
Hello, greetings commissioners. My name is Jared O'Shaw. My address is 2674 Buckman Road, part of Area 1B. Excuse me. I'm here today to ask for your support in our effort to self-determination in where we are and where we will be. The people of Area 1B overwhelmingly do not wish to be annexed into the city, and for many good reasons too. We are more than weary that the city will hold up its end of any promises on paper. The same paper they wish to annex us. The city has problems with infrastructure, and it's no secret that they can't, cannot afford to fix the problems they have, such as the wastewater treatment plant and the roads. There are many areas they have annexed that still lack services or attention they need, and is spelled out in the same paper. We, the people of Area 1B, do not wish to be a bargaining chip used to try to get the city to function. We wish that you lead for the people as elected figureheads for the, of the people. The city threw our last effort in our face with meager technicalities, not truths. Truth is, we have always been connected to the Algufría Village, as the annexation agreement stated. We have the right to submit a petition or petitions to join the village prior to being annexed. This provision was acknowledged in this agreement with our history in mind and our self-determination of our future also in mind. Provisions such as this are for the residents, not for the city outside or the larger property owners, or owner, no. Just the residents. This provision also does not call for us to present any proof of our ability to become a new village, or it would have cited that state law. Tacoma Vista was added to the village by this body without citing state law and without a provision, provision directly mentioning a specific area. There is just three years left in this agreement. The city has no plans for the residents, it has annexed, and will not be able to provide us any in this unrealistic timeframe. Please, when we submit our petition prior to being annexed, as the agreement states, we would like for you to consider the truths and the people, not the big corporate pressure and the half-truths, truths we see from the city in our politic, in our larger political climate currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, from the chambers. Thank you, Pam Roy.
Madam Chair, Bustamante and commissioners, great to be here this afternoon. My name is Pam Roy. I reside at 41 Royal Honda Trail, Santa Fe, 87508. And I'm here with my brother Rob Roy as well. We're here to ask and also share our appreciation for your support of the open space discussion that you just had in the passage of open space, and more specifically to the Bobcat Ranch open space proposal that COLPACT passed as well, proposed. Want to thank COLPACT for doing that and going through a lot of, also getting all of the letters, I think those are in your packages, from lots of people who are interested in open space and the preservation of that open space. Just a few things to bring up. This particular property, it's in a really incredible area where, and to Commissioner Green's point a little while ago, how do we connect, right? We're connecting to bigger things. And Commissioner Hughes, you brought up the questions like expansion of the Galistio Basin. This would be able to connect to the Galistio Basin area eventually, along with the Royal, the rail trail as well. Again, giving a lot more opportunity for people to move about. We are very fortunate, we live very, very near the Royal Honda Open Space that was developed not that long ago, honestly. And what we learned through that experience and continue to learn is the wide range of people who utilize these trails. And I know Commissioner Kokari Stone brought that up of like, we want to make sure everybody feels welcome and included. In that process as well, is there so much opportunity for people to volunteer? And that's what we've seen at the Galistio Basin. Lots of volunteer groups who are out there on Santa Fe Conservation Trust and more, who are helping to expand those trails, the community participation, along with the partnership with the county. So we just really appreciate your consideration of this really precious open space that is also in a critical area of pressure from growth, and in particular, the growth of water, the need for water and water resources. So we just hope for your continued support of the Bobcat Ranch open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the chambers wishing to speak during public comment? Okay, we'll go to online.
Chair Bustamante, our first speaker online is Chris Michels.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
The Chair, Mr. Madam Chair and the questioners, this is, this is, this is the same problem I brought to you last time, which has to do with, with an EPR request concerning some election materials from the November election. It's now three, it's now three months since November, when I first requested this material, and I still don't have it. And at this point, I've, I've launched a formal EPR request, which is not being answered, it's not even being acknowledged. So you're basically in a position where you are stonewalling a request from the public for election materials that are clearly in the public forum and in the public interest to be released. Please reconsider this. What I've, since the last time, I've been doing a bit more research, of some of which I've shared with you on emails, and one of the most important parts is that you can document easily, and I have in the emails, the fact that Santa Fe County, the Santa Fe County clerk used the wrong statutes for the election. What she did was she used the, she used obsolete same-day registration statutes, which went obsolete on 1 July 2023. She didn't catch that. So what she did is she proceeded to use obsolete statute, which is a violation of the election code, and on the 26th of October, I caught that error and advised the Secretary of State, and they changed it. But as far as I can tell, Santa Fe did not change anything. They just kept knowingly, non-knowingly using the wrong statutes. Now at that point, up to that point, it's ignorance, and after that point, it becomes criminal. So what you're doing is basically, you're helping the Santa Fe County clerk to cover up what was originally just a careless error and is now becoming a criminal act, because now you're in a conspiracy to cover up this, using the wrong statutes. And the fact is that the statutes disadvantaged the voters, and even by her own testimony at canvassing, caused some voters to just drop out and give up. You had a huge mess with the same-day registration because of this. All of this, she prefers to have you ignore. This was raised, this was raised at the canvassing meeting, and she did a lot of quick talking to get around it. What you have today is, it's not, it's not just Santa Fe County, you've got a cover-up going on across the state. Some of the other states that are, some of the other counties involved, Sandoval County, Talas County, Santa Fe County, you're all covering up the fact that you used the wrong statutes. Not everybody used the wrong statutes, Espanola, Los Alamos, used the right, used the right statutes. So it's just, the worst thing it's doing here is a cover-up is going on. Originally, it was an ignorant error, and it was a very ignorant error on the part of both the Santa Fe clerk and the Secretary of State. It's the fact that you're covering it up means that no corrective actions were taken, and now you're just going forward. So I'd say, please, for your own good and the good of the public, stop the cover-up. Answer my EPR, deal with this problem, and, and give up this, and give up this criminal activity. So anyway, please, take care of this.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Chair Bustamante, our next speaker is Sid Monroe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and County Commissioners, for allowing us the time to speak. I'm compelled to speak today on the recent newspaper reports about the potential quote, "City county cooperation," quote. In a perfect world, city-county cooperation is necessary and would ideally benefit residents in both areas. However, the residents of Area 1B were alarmed to be lumped into the possible conversation about this cooperation. It is simplistic and it ignores the rights of the hundreds of residents who live in, vote and pay taxes to the county. Cooperation has been used in the past as a cover for sneak, secret negotiations that leave the public in the dark and throw so-called solutions on residents. The reality is, there are several difficult issues involved for Area 1B. And over and over, the city has neglected, ignored, and fails its existing residents while misleading and making broken promises to those in the county who would be affected by city annexation. The city, city councilors and mayor for the past 18 years have talked at county residents, dictating what the city wants to be. Area 1V residents have been clear and steadfast for nearly two decades. We want to remain in the county. We have spoken time and time again to the county and to the city. So all, by all means, let's cooperate and keep us in the county. And let's work to make sure any annexation negotiations happen with full transparency and in the light of day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair Bustamante, there are no more users.
Thank you very much. This concludes, unless there is anyone else in the chambers, this concludes Matters of Public Concern. Back to our Item 7C, presentation, request for approval of lease agreement number 2025-0216PW.
Madam Chair, my wife serves on the board of the Food Depot, a wonderfully worthy organization, but I will be sitting out the conversation on this.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, Michelle Kaski, your real property supervisor. I'm here with Ann Ryan, Community Services Director, and Sergio Meta Cisneros, here from the Home, from the Home Depot, sorry, the Food Depot. And we've got a lease in front of you to provide parking to the Food Depot for their fleet of vehicles. And right now, they are parking those vehicles at their Silo, Silo Road facility, but they're bursting at the seams. And we happen to have a half-acre parking lot that is not being used, because the facility it's at is not being fully used at the moment. And we see an opportunity to support the Food Depot and our collective interests to address food insecurity and childhood hunger by giving them a place to park their fleet of vehicles. And we stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Hughes.
No questions, I just think this is a great idea, I'm glad we're able to do it. I guess one, one question, what sort of services will they provide or count toward the lease?
We will be measuring the poundage of food that they collect and distribute. And they already have a annual accounting measure where they have a value appraised for each pound of food that they collect and distribute. And so we will be applying that to the value of the lease.
Great.
Thank you. Additional questions for Ms. Kaski? Do we have any comments from Ann Ryan? Anyone else? Do we hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve the lease agreement between Santa Fe County and the Food Depot for a lease of one-half acre tract of real property located at 4250 Airport Road in Santa Fe for the use of parking to support distribution of food to those experiencing food insecurity in our community.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hughes, a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Kokari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Did Commissioner Green abstain?
And Commissioner Green abstained.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Item D, Resolution 2025, approving application to New Mexico Finance Authority's Opportunity Enterprise Housing Development Revolving Fund Program for low-interest rate loan funds. Paul.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Paul Olison with the Community Development Department. I'm here today requesting approval of a resolution that would authorize the county to enter into a, or to submit an application for a low-interest loan agreement. This is to support the low-income tax credit housing, affordable housing projects that we have partnered with TWG on constructing. The New Mexico Finance Authority Opportunity Enterprise Housing Development Revolving Loan Fund Program, that's a mouthful, is offering an application period, it closes on March 21st. The county would intend to apply for the maximum available, which would be up to $4 million. The project team feels that they could easily absorb the loan and use it towards construction for infrastructure. And, you know, of course, the project serves 159 units with 53 for seniors and 103 for families. And with that, I would, or 56, 106, I'm sorry, my math was off. And with, it also authorizes the county manager's signature authority on any and all documents for the application's submittal. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have any questions for Mr. Olison? Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Paul. I just want to give a shout-out to how we work at all different levels of government to make, to make this a much more feasible project. Having, you know, the NMFA's preferable loan agreement terms, be it lower interest rates, is a great way for us to leverage the, the state's, you know, opportunities. And so for our strategic opportunities. And so it aligns the state's needs to get housing on board, and we're, we're executing it. So great job finding all of these tools, because they hide all over the place. And New Mexico is such an amazing state with all these tools for economic development, for housing, for, for community development, community services. Great job on finding this, so thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you. And I just want to emphasize too, it's a whole-team effort. We have tremendous support from legal, from the manager's office, and then we have just a fabulous development team that we're all working together on.
I agree. It's, you're hitting it many different levels, so great job.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Olison? There are none?
Oh, just a quick comment. Thanks for digging under every rock for money.
We're trying.
Madam Chair, if there's nothing else, I will make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the application to the New Mexico Finance Authority's Opportunity Enterprise Housing Development Revolving Fund Program for low-interest rate loan funds to support the infrastructure and construction of the Nueva Sequia 4 and Nueva Sequia 9 affordable housing projects, and granting this county manager or designee authority to sign any and all documents necessary for the submittal of this application.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Green, we have a second by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, resolution number, please?
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-026.
Thank you very much.
Almost seconded by someone over there, I think. Almost seconded by someone over there, I think.
It was fast. It turns into a race sometimes. Okay, presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Presentations, Presentation Concerning Colt Pack Recommendation to Acquire Bobcat Crossing Ranch. This has been a popular conversation. It's been in the paper. Um, I do want to make it clear that this is just a presentation. There will be no action taken today. There are a lot of considerations that would need to be made, including other items that the county would prioritize. So I appreciate the presentation, and, um, there will be no vote at the end or discussion from the public. Thank you, Ms. Murthy. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm presenting Colt Pack's recommendation to the Board to acquire Bobcat Crossing Ranch for addition to Santa Fe County's Open Space Trails and Parks Program. In accordance with the acquisition process outlined in Resolution 2009-206, Colt Pack voted to recommend the acquisition of this property to the Board during a special meeting on December 4th, 2024. The property known as Bobcat Crossing Ranch is located north of El Dorado, south of Seaton Village, and is bordered to the west by two miles of the Santa Fe Rail Trail and to the east by I-25. The landowner, Rancho Viejo Partnership, has agreed to sell the parcel to Santa Fe County at the fair market value of $3,700,000. With the property being approximately 2,650 acres, this brings the cost to approximately $1,396 per acre. On December 4th, 2024, Colt Pack unanimously, sorry, unanimously voted to recommend the following to the Board. Recognizing a generational opportunity to secure an exceptional resource for the people of Santa Fe County, Colt Pack strongly recommends acquisition of the property known as Bobcat Crossing Ranch for the purpose of open space at fair market value or the asking price, whichever is less. To ensure the best and most cost-effective management of the archaeological site LA4, the committee further recommends that a third party be sought to preserve and manage that site. That is Colt Pack's recommendation. As outlined in the application, the acquisition of Bobcat Crossing Ranch would preserve for both present and future generations the largest undeveloped tract of land between Santa Fe and El Dorado. In addition, the property contains a wealth of environmental, cultural, and recreational resources that would provide significant benefits to the public. As described in the application, these benefits are summarized as follows. Links extends and adds value to the existing county trail system via the Santa Fe Rail Trail, can support a range of new trail types, including multi-use loop or single-use trails, includes recreational potential beyond trails, such as dramatic overlooks, interpretive tours, and educational programming, has confirmed archaeological resources of high value, contains or is adjacent to historic trails, including a historic alignment of Route 66, has the presence of surface water, is a critical part of a regional wildlife corridor connecting to the Sangre de Cristo Mountains, um, to the Galisteo Basin and the Ortiz and Sandia Mountains, and is currently undeveloped and relatively free of disturbance. The application proposes that the property be utilized as a combination of a preserve open space and recreational space, and that the development of recreational infrastructure be carefully balanced with the natural characteristics of the parcel to ensure that the land is used in a way that does not cause damage or degradation to its environmental integrity. In accordance with Resolution 2009-206, should the Board approve, um, at some point in the future, to move forward with the acquisition process of this property, staff would then be authorized to proceed with negotiations with the property owner to enter into a binding commitment to acquire the property contingent upon due diligence measures that the staff deems appropriate, such as, uh, an environmental survey to identify any potential hazards or a cultural resources survey, um, and a title report. To conclude, no action is recommended at this time. And should the Board favorably consider Colt Pack's recommendation, staff will submit a capital request for the purchase of Bobcat Crossing Ranch for the Board's consideration during the upcoming fiscal year, 2026 budget cycle. And in the audience, we have, uh, three Colt Pack members, Steve Ferdy, Dan Potter, Brian Bird, and as well as two of the landowners, Warren Thompson and Cass Thompson. So myself or any of, um, the folks in, that I pointed out are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Ms. Murthy? Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, well, first of all, I think this is a fantastic opportunity to buy Bobcat Ranch. I, I have, I live close to there, and I've been on that, so I think it's important. But, for all the reasons you stated too. But I was wondering, are we going to involve the tribes in managing that? Again, since there's all those archaeological sites, have you thought of that?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Hughes, um, I haven't done any extensive tribal outreach about this, but I did notify one of, um, our main partners with Thornton Ranch, which is the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer with the Pueblo of Pawke, uh, Firmin Lopez. And he stated that he was, um, in favor of the acquisition. We haven't discussed management in any way, but Colt Pack did recommend that an entity with expertise in cultural resource management be the ones to manage that area.
Okay, and Pawke was interested, so that's good.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Murthy? Commissioner Green?
Thanks. Um, is there, um, is there a chance for us to tour this? Is there, uh, any, um, any access available now for us to see with our own eyes what things are? Did Colt Pack tour this? Did, I guess there's two questions. Did Colt Pack tour it? And did, uh, is there any opportunity for us to tour it?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, as part of Colt Pack's review process, they did tour the property. And, um, I could coordinate with the landowners and your liaisons to set up a tour if that's something that the Board would like.
Um, I would love it. I don't know, can't speak for my other commissioners, but, um, I think I see one nodding head, and we all like a beautiful day on this, on the land, so, if it's possible. I don't know how we announce it and do things like that, but I also think it wouldn't be a bad idea to do a community if it's, if it's feasible and, uh, risk management allows us to take the public out there, that maybe that we have a community walk out there to go take a look at it.
Thank you.
And it is accessible by the bike trail, already?
Even better. More, all the more reason.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson?
Um, thank you, Chair. Very excited about this proposal. I am in support of purchasing this property. Um, a, a couple of questions. So, was this property identified by Colt Pack, or did the property owner come to Colt Pack to, um, and ask if they were interested?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, in this case, the application came forward from Colt Pack.
Can you tell us a tiny bit without balancing privacy through of cultural resources, can you tell us a tiny bit about the archaeological resources, what is preserved on that site and why it's culturally important?
Um, yeah, Commissioner Johnson, the site is protected by the Galisteo Basin Archaeological Sites Protection Act. It's called Chimisa Losita. Anybody can find it on the, the website of that act. Um, and it's, um, I, I think-
How much of the, how much of the acreage does it, um?
If, I were to estimate, maybe, um, the Colt Pack member here, Dan Potter, might have more information, but I would estimate it's probably between like two to five acres.
Two to five of 2,600 and change?
This site.
Sorry, you'd have to come to the microphone, please.
Who? I don't think it has. I'll ask her.
It's, uh, can you hear that? Okay.
Yes, but-
Oh, Dan Potter, a member of Colt Pack, and I'm a retired archaeologist.
Thank you.
We should keep in mind that this site was excavated by Nelson, Nelson, a very early figure in North American archaeology over a century ago. And, um, archaeological techniques have changed a little bit since then. But what we do know and what is public information about the site, it wa, it's ancestral pueblo, um, about 300 rooms, as Nelson estimated, um, two-story pueblo ruin. And it was centered around, we think, what may have been a spring at that time that is now mapped on USGS quad sheets as Pueblo Well. Um, the flows of water in that stream, uh, in that canyon called Canyona Ancho uh, probably had to support agriculture at that time, both above and below the archaeological site itself. So we don't, as far as I know, there's been no testing, archaeological testing at that site since Nelson was there. And so the, the parameters of the site boundaries uh, are probably pretty vague and might expand or contract depending on what a, uh, archaeological contractor would determine. Things like ground penetrating radar and surface examination and so on are required really to get a good idea of the extent of, of that site. Um, one other thing to note is this parcel of land, as far as I know, has never had an archaeological survey on it. It is highly likely that additional cultural resources exist both on and below, uh, the surface, and they could date to pueblo times or considerably earlier and later to Spanish colonial times. So, um, in some ways, this parcel, archaeologically speaking, is a bit of a, a black hole. Um, but, uh, with county ownership and management, uh, those questions would hopefully be answered in detail and, and managed, uh, properly. Uh, one other note, while the, um, Galisteo Basin Archaeological Protection Act listed this site specifically as a significant site in the Galisteo Basin, uh, and a letter that is in your packet from the Historic Preservation Office uh, says that this site qualifies, is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. It has national, um, significance. There's, there's much more, the, uh, there's much more to be known about the site. And the site currently, because it resides on private land, has no protection under state or federal law. It is an unprotected but highly significant site. County ownership would improve, uh, that situation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Potter. One other question, actually, before you leave the microphone. It's, it's minor, but what was the date of occupation of the site?
That too is a little bit of an open question. Uh, there are dendrochronological dates from the site, tree ring dates. Uh, they occur over a very tight 30-year, I think, interval. Uh, the ceramics tell a little bit different story. Um, uh, what is called the Coalition Period, or at least part of it, maybe from 1200 AD to 1400 AD or so. But that's another reason why we would like or we would recommend that a, uh, a qualified archaeologist take a look at this parcel and the site to get a little bit better idea of what we have there.
Interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I would, I, if I may, Chair, um, I, I would support a tour of the property as well. Um, I think it's worth checking out. We're not going to be able to visit all 2,600 acres. But it, it seems like, uh, if we're considering such a purchase, it would be nice to understand. Are there current, um, any, are there any concerns about connectivity to the rail trail? There's a two-mile stretch. I imagine some of it is probably in use, although not legally, um, as far as the private property owner is concerned. Are, are there any concerns about access via the, that two-mile stretch, or is it fairly easy to connect to a multitude of trail systems?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, um, ideally, we would want multiple access points, but there, there is one that is very, um, well-established. It serves as a, a road right now to connect two private parcels. And there's a, um, tre, like a train crossing area right there and a gate. So that would be a really easy and obvious access point from the rail trail.
And was there ever a homestead, any type of building on the property, or is, I know there's a road at the northeast corner?
There's no building, no. There, the infrastructure present on the property are two wells. Livestock, drinking, with livestock drinking tanks.
Is it currently used for livestock grazing?
It is, yes.
Um, at this point, no further questions.
Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Yes, thank you. Um, I appreciate your presentation and your work. If we were to visit the land and give homage to the land and consider it as part of the county, is it possible to take some indigenous historians with us who know the area? And then my sec, my question is, are we certain as a county that none of the pueblos would want to buy the land?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kokari Stone, to answer your first question, I can make that happen. If that's what the Board desires, to invite, um, a few of our tribal partners on the field trip. In terms of whether, um, um, one of the tribal nations of New Mexico or beyond would like to purchase the land, I don't know.
I, I do think that's a consideration, and I don't know how we mindfully respect a process of acquisition of land that is open for sale when we think about the his, history of the land being indigenous. So I, I just think as a county, we need to think about the ethical considerations of acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Um, thank you very much. Um, as I look on the tax assessor's map, uh, I see one, two, three, four properties that could be theoretically landlocked. Um, and I'm wondering how those properties might be addressed.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, um, could you explain where and-
Yeah, sure. So, uh, in the, uh, on the northern boundary of the property, there are a number of properties, uh, owned by a local educational institution. And it looks like some private members, and I don't know if they have access. And so I wonder if that complicates a deal, or whether access has to be maintained, or whether we would have to acquire those properties too in an effort to, um, you know, not, you know, mess up their situation.
Maybe that's something the landowners can speak to. I'm sure they've communicated with them.
Sure, please.
Uh, I believe the tracks you're, you're referring to belong to St. Michael's.
That's correct, yes.
They are literally on top of a mountain. It has a very steep slope. So I doubt you could get a road to them. They were gifted to, to St. Mike's, and, um, I don't know how you would get, uh, a legal road to those properties because of the topography.
I understand completely, but I think we should deal with, you know, definitely reach out to them and find a way, whether there's a land trade that's more accessible, that they could get the equivalent value somewhere else in the county, it's fine. It just doesn't have to be right there. But they do have an asset, and they are, um, an institution in our community.
That's, that's correct, and they are landlocked, so, um, I don't know that there's any access to that.
And there's some other properties up in that little cluster there that, so, I, I think before anything's ready for us to really address, I think some of these questions that we all had, um, can definitely, uh, be at least addressed, maybe not resolved, but definitely make sure that we don't cut them out of the conversation, whether- whether it's a tribal conversation or whether it's a, you know, working with St. Mike's or something.
Understood.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hughes?
Just that I would like to move ahead on this. And, I mean, we can do a tour and other things. I think, though, we should move ahead and bring it forward at appropriate time, not necessarily wait for the June 26th, July 26th, July of '26 budget discussion. We may want to buy this earlier.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I want to support Commissioner Hughes in that suggestion. I think that, you know, recognizing that Commissioner Green earlier spoke about wanting access plans and things like that. It's my position that we should be nimble in property acquisition as a county. And perhaps we should bake that into our future budgets. But in all districts, we should be able to, I would say, jump at opportunities to acquire open space that serves diverse populations in, you know, all across our 2,000-square-mile county. So for that reason, I would support moving forward with the application ASAP.
I appreciate the input. I do want to just remind us that all that we do have a big-picture budget that we want to look at. I think this is ideal. The timing is such that we are starting our budget process and we can see how and where this would fit in the priorities that the county has. As Commissioner Green pointed out, there are a number of things on that list. I will say with regard to landlock, the property that you are talking about has other private properties on the opposite side that really don't affect this particular piece of property. They could access it through various private ownership. And as well, if there is interest on the seller's part to open it for sale to tribal communities, I want to also acknowledge that it doesn't necessarily mean that it would be for preservation if it's purchased by a tribal community. It may be developed at whatever density, especially if it's made into a land trust. So we want to be aware of all the possible things that can happen with that space as well as acknowledging that in the big picture, as ideal as... And I'm just going to speak personally. I love to see every bit of land purchased for open space, but also understand the reality of what that means. So thank you very much, Adeline. Appreciate all your good work and working with the Colpac in assuring that we have deep consideration for the review of any of these properties that are put up for open space and protection.
Thank you.
All right. On to our matters from the county manager, miscellaneous updates. Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. First item that I wanted to bring to the board's attention concerns the scheduling of budget study sessions. There were some proposed dates that were set to commissioners, I believe, earlier this week. The proposed budget study sessions are from, you know, May 9th to, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., Monday, May 12th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., Wednesday, May 14th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Friday, May 16th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. You know, that allows presentations and consideration by the board to be stretched out. We could condense that if the board was desirous of having longer potential sessions and trying to get things done in three days and perhaps then reserving other days in the future. But wanted to get some feedback from the board relative to those proposed dates and whether the board would like to schedule three or four budget study sessions in May.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer.
And again, this is with regard to the operating budget and fixed asset request. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want us to consider any of the preferences now at this time or just to keep that in mind?
If you can look at your calendar just to confirm availability while everyone's here, that would be great, just so that we can get all those dates blocked out. And then again, if there is feedback relative to three versus four, you know, we can factor that in and adjust some of the times to provide a little bit more time on three days rather than four. It wouldn't provide a significant elongation of the previous meetings. Might extend them by an extra hour if we went from four down to three. And again, the dates were Friday, May 9th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., Monday, May 12th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., Wednesday, May 14th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Friday, May 16th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Those work for me.
And can you please give me the date after the 9th?
Monday, May 12th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Madam Chair, I am out around the earlier part of that time. So the 9th, 10th, and 11th, and 12th.
You won't be available on the...
I will not. I will be virtual probably for the county commission meeting on the 12th.
Okay. And the 12th, there is a commission meeting on that day as well? So we would have...
13th is the commission meeting.
I see. Okay, I see. Okay.
Ideally, it could be either later or we could start a week earlier, but...
Are we amenable to moving that to a week earlier and then reconvening on the 14th?
So would that be the 5th, the 7th, and the 9th?
I prefer not the 7th or the 9th, or the 11th.
So Manager Schaefer, Commissioner Green won't be available the 9th or the 12th?
So would May 5th then work for the rest of the board? And maybe we try to go forward with three budget study sessions?
That works for... Commissioner...
Chair Bustamante, the original dates work better. The May 5th, I'm putting on a statewide event, May 5th and 6th. So would not be available.
We'll go back to the drawing board.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to it.
Can I make a case for condensing it to three days so that we can concentrate our time for those of us who have day jobs and competing schedules?
And Madam Chair, if there's a, there's a great tool, Google Doodle, or whatever it's called, but it's a scheduling. So you can actually all put your availability online. And so we can actually not have to deal with it in these situations. And you just put it out there. We're thinking three days. Please put your availability in online.
Thank you.
We'll proceed accordingly. And then the last update that I had for the board was just to alert the board that we are actively working on a significant grant proposal relative to fire hazard mitigation in terms of implementing an existing project relative to fuel mitigation pursuant to our existing approved, you know, plan. That is due, I believe, in mid-March. Tentatively, we think that the proposed grant will likely be in the multimillions of dollars. If successful, there would be a 20% match. We did set aside funds. The board did relative to seizing on such significant grant opportunities. And that would be the likely source of any matching requirements that we are unable to meet through in-kind services. But again, it's just a heads-up that the county is proactively pursuing that grant opportunity. That's all I have via miscellaneous updates. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Item B, the first session, 57th legislature, updates and potential action to express support.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners Hetchy Miller, Santa Fe County Manager's Office. And we'll just wait momentarily while the reports are being passed out. But just as an FYI, these are also all available on board docs. And just to preface the later discussion regarding this topic, the House Bill 435 was tabled this morning in committee. So we're going to pass over the discussion of that particular item.
Mr. Miller, that would be the one that was referring to the recommendations for placement of utility-scale battery storage, alternative energy? Is that that one?
Chair Bustamante, that's correct. That was sponsored by Chair McQueen. Okay, so I think I can make this rather brief and leave a lot of time for your questions and discussion on items. So my report is this particular one here. And within it, I have highlighted the bills which have significant movement up to this time. And I have listed on page one are all the items that have passed both the House and the Senate. Starting on page two is all the items which have passed the House. There's 26 House items and two Senate bills. Starting on page six, there are all the items passed by the Senate. 23 total items, including two House bills. And what we have been doing so far is I've been receiving feedback from the commission regarding specific pieces of legislation. And I believe that is working out very well. So I can provide you in-depth analysis so that you can look at certain pieces of legislation. And I appreciate that. And I just want to thank other departments too, who I go to to get input on the analysis of these bills. And we provide that to you as well. With that being said, some particular pieces of legislation that I just wanted to highlight today were... The most recent and the biggest is the passage of House Bill 2, which is the state budget. That was passed yesterday by the, in the full House. And that kind of clears up the road for further legislation that's coming forward. Takes a lot of the guesswork out of what is going to be funded. And you get a better picture of what types of legislation will be going forward. And with that, I wasn't going to go into great detail of all the components of it. But you can either do it now or you can contact me later to say, hey, is there a particular department receiving funding for a project or initiative? Or is a particular Senate bill or House bill contained within the state budget? And I can provide you detailed analysis at a later time to give you all the information that I can bring forward to you regarding the funding that is in there now. With that said, once the budget is passed on the House side, there is still a remainder of funding that's left. And that then is determined by the Senate and through the Senate Finance Committee to decide what additions that they're going to additionally make to the state budget. And they will put that in once it goes over to Senate Finance. And I don't know the particular amount that they have left in leeway to allocate to different projects and agencies within the state budget. But I will just provide you at a later time just the highlights of what's in there. And like I said, if there's particular things that you want to see that are in there which are related to your priorities, I can do that. Also, a particular note is the passage of Senate Bill 1, 2, and 3. Senate Bill 1 and 3 has passed both the House and the Senate. And these are the bills related to behavioral health and the funding that is supposed to come in the form of a trust fund set up by the state. And I had provided some information previously. But just a brief overview is that Senate Bill 1 is the particular legislation that sets up the trust fund. It was originally conceived to be a $1 billion trust fund. And right now, I don't see that the funding has been allocated in the state budget. But speaking with Senate staff today, they were letting me know that that most likely would be put in on the Senate side. And on the discussion had about Senate Bill 1 on the Senate floor, it was stated that it would most likely occur in two allocations, one this year and one next year, coming up to that $1 billion total for the trust fund. Senate Bill 2, this right now consists of $152 million for public health and safety initiatives. And what this is doing is getting that jumpstart for all the initiatives that the state is looking to conquer related to behavioral health. And instead of waiting for the trust fund to start realizing its returns, they understand that the need is immediate. So that's why they're putting forth this $152 million right now. A lot of these items are actually funded within House Bill 2 currently. I was looking through it today to see that some of the items are within Administrator Office of the Courts and other agencies. But I don't believe that every single one of the initiatives in here within House Bill 2 has been fully funded or has been determined to be funded at a particular amount. So these funding amounts that are shown within the Senate Finance Committee for Senate Bill 2, they could be increased once it's finally said and done, the state budget. Senate Bill 3, this is the bill which sets up how the state is going forth with the process of implementing these different behavioral health initiatives within the state and how that trickles down to localities and eventually how Santa Fe County will be able to use the funding that's going to be coming from both Senate Bill 2 and also Senate Bill 1. And speaking with our Community Service Director, Santa Fe County is in a very good position because we do have a lot of initiatives that are in place. So it's not that we are going to have to start from the ground up with a lot of our services. So if you would like, I think it'd be beneficial if we could have a conversation perhaps later to, so that she could define what we have here at the county. Because what this does is, in Senate Bill 3, is that the main ideal is that Administrator Office of the Courts is supposed to set up regional plans throughout the state. So it's not really determined yet if these are going to be the judicial districts themselves or other designated areas that have specific behavioral health needs. But we do have time. The end date for setting up these regional plans is 2027. But through discussions that they've had for Senate Bill 3, they're... they've had for Senate Bill 3, they're saying, the sooner you can provide the information, the better, because then they'll be able to start working with you to implement your initiatives for your locality. So like I said, we have a lot of behavioral health initiatives already in place, and with that in mind, with my discussion with community services, there are some unknowns within the implementation of the regional plans that should be pointed out, and we have that ability now to say that these are some things that we've noticed that are missing within your conceptual ideal for starting up the regional plans. Lastly, I just wanted to go over House Joint Resolution 11, which is a proposed constitutional amendment to repeal the anti-donation clause. So far, this has gone through one committee, and right now, it passed to House Government and Elections Committee with no recommendation. So what that, well, the next stop for this bill is that it's going to House Judiciary Committee. So there was issues related with the drafting of the piece of legislation as is, so they left it up to the next committee, the Legal Review Committee, more or less, House Judiciary, to start making changes that they had seen within the bill. And I'll just read out some of the concerns stated within the impact statement. "Could create a new source of demand for capital outlay appropriations by removing an existing barrier to make capital appropriations directly to nonprofits for privately-owned So that means that nonprofits would be asking for it more, and right now, it's estimated that 5% of capital outlay appropriations go to nonprofits. "How joint resolution 11 could pressure in ethics and disclosure laws in New Mexico? Unconstrained subsidies could pressure state laws limiting gifts. Quid pro quo conflicts of interest require financial disclosures." And from our own analysis here at the county, it was seen that the bill eliminates the prohibition against donations to private entities, but it does not eliminate the prohibition against the pledging of credit. Also, the bill eliminates all existing exceptions found in Article 9, Section 14. The upshot of these changes is that they arguably call into question a lot of what the county does vis-à-vis bond financing. For example, the county may constitutionally finance affordable housing under either the care for the sick and indigent or affordable housing. Exceptions to Article 9, Section 14. If House Joint Resolution 11 is adopted, the county arguably loses the authority to issue such bond financing as that would amount to a pledge of credit in the aid of a private person or private entity. It would then be required to either argue that there is no private beneficiary of a bond issuance or restructure the bond project so that any benefit realized by a private person from the county's pledge of its credit comes in the form of some donation of funds. So right now, I think it'd be a good idea to see if these items are addressed, but in the meantime, we can definitely share these with, at the legislature and the sponsor and House Judiciary, our particular concerns of House Joint Resolution 11. So I don't think that there's any particular pieces of legislation that I'm requesting clarification of support or opposition to. With that, I'll go to County Manager Schaefer for his analysis of House Bill 212.
Thank you, Hachi. Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. One bill that we did put together, you know, some high-level analysis for is House Bill 212, and this is the bill that would, over time, ban the sale of products within New Mexico that have intentionally added PFAS. This, you know, program would generally be administered in terms of, you know, what products would be banned and when, and whether there are any products that have an unavoidable use of PFAS in them in the Environmental Improvement Board. You know, STAS bottom-line analysis, and this is from both myself as well as from our Sustainability Manager and our Public Works Department Director, is that this is the way to go in terms of trying to keep unnecessary PFAS out of the environment. It would be a significant step forward in those efforts. Products would start to be banned in terms of intentionally added PFAS in January of 2027, and then another list of products would be banned in January 1, 2028. And then, as we read it and understand the law, beginning January 1, 2029, you could not sell any product that has intentionally added PFAS unless the Environmental Improvement Board has adopted a rule providing that the use of PFAS in that product is currently unavoidable. There are many exceptions outlined in the proposed bill, but at the end of the day, again, we think this is a significant step forward in terms of removing unnecessary or avoidable PFAS in our waste streams and in our consumer products. The estimate from the Legislative Finance, or excuse me, Legislative Council Service is that the cost to the state on a recurring basis to implement this legislation would be $2.187 to $2.316 million per year. On the other side of the ledger, NMED estimates that the cost to remove and destroy one pound of PFAS from water is between $2.7 million to $18 million, again, per one pound of PFAS removed from water. So this is something that we do think warrants support from the Board, but, you know, the Board obviously could go in a different direction or delay consideration of that to a future meeting, but it does look as if, you know, this bill, the current iteration of this bill is moving timely through the process. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions about STAS' bottom-line recommendation that we support this effort to keep avoidable PFAS out of our state and out of the products that we use and are sold in the state. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer, Manager Schaefer, and Attorney Boyd. Given that this is a recommended action and it was not listed under action items, is that any concern for our notice or what we've provided to the public in advance?
Chair Bustamante, I don't believe it's a concern. The agenda item identifies the subject of discussion and that there's going to be a possible action on legislative updates at this meeting, and so any interested member of the public, if they wanted to come and observe and offer comment on legislative matters that should be considered by the Board, would have been able to do so. So I don't have any misgivings about the Board considering, you know, discussing and taking a vote on these specific legislation, these pieces of legislation.
I appreciate that. I would like to move this as the, I know there may be other questions for Hachi. At this time, I would like to move this recommended action. Go first with regard to supporting House Bill 212. It is something that we, as a county and as a state, have already had some experience with and recognizing that, as stated in the letter, though this bill would not come without expense, we understand and know firsthand what the expense is for having PFAS. Are there any questions, concerns regarding House Bill 212? And if not, is there a motion to support? And frankly, I'd like to do this coming out of District 3, given that that's where we've had the exposure to PFAS in people's private wells. I would like to, if there's no discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Green.
So I will second when it's time, but just in just some discussion of this and to know the process, where it's going, and has it been modified in a way that we think could, you know, is there pushback on it? And is there ways that we can support strengthening it? Because I think, you know, it's in our interest to have the strongest measure here, and are there points in this, through your analysis, where you think it was dumbed down or made weaker, or whatever terminology we want to use to say that it doesn't serve our purpose for the community well-being?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green. So right now, I was going to ask about this, actually. The iteration that it's particularly at is the House Judiciary Committee substitute for House Bill 212. I don't know if that makes a difference to the...
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, you know, my understanding is that at this point, the major objections, as I understand it, that had been brought forward have been addressed through the House Judiciary Committee substitute for the prior committee's substitute. And, you know, my understanding is that, you know, this is considered a workable compromise, not that it's perfect, but that it is the result of efforts to address concerns that have been, you know, brought forward. So I'm not aware of anything in particular, you know, that would be of monumental concern, but at the same time, I also believe that this is the compromise, or this is the result of efforts to meet concerns that have been brought forward and come up with a compromise proposal that, you know, folks could live with. I hope that answers your question.
It does.
And my point is, I don't know that our weighing in on an aspect or another is going to be particularly fruitful.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of, let's not call it products, but let's call it byproducts. When we have wastewater treatment facilities, such as the Quill, or if we do something in the Tusuki in Pawake Valley, are those addressed in this as a, something that we will be dinged with, or is there some, a concern here that even though it is quote-unquote "not a product, but a byproduct," that maybe we should be, you know, aware of or addressing?
Commissioner Bustamante, Commissioner Green, I hadn't seen any of, anything related to, I guess, water or wastewater construction in the discussions had. Items that were brought to attention were, I guess, uses of PFAS in electronics, fire retardants, medical uses, and those had been addressed with exemptions or conditions where they could be utilized if it was, a proper cleanup was provided after its use. But for your particular question, I don't know if that applies to installation of water or wastewater infrastructure.
If I could add to that, Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, I don't believe that this bill endeavors to put liability on, you know, cleanup efforts relative to wastewater or water. I would note that I believe there has been bipartisan legislation that's been introduced at the federal level specifically to address that concern relative to trying to hold utilities responsible for, you know, PFAS contamination that, again, they don't directly control or contribute to. I know that Chair Bustamante is very familiar relative to that federal legislation, given the committee that she serves on for NACO, and so she would be a good source of information. But my understanding is that bipartisan legislation has been introduced at the federal level to avoid, I think, the very result that you're concerned about.
Great, thank you for clarifying that.
I will say exactly, like I was, thank you for that, Manager Schaefer, and that would be a reason, a good reason to show up to the ILUAA, they call it ILUAA, but it is the Energy, let me open it, I've got it right here, the...
The Land Use and...
Environment, Energy, and Land Use Policy Steering Committee, which is putting forward in our federal priorities as assuring that local jurisdictions are not held liable for the PFAS that ends up in our waste streams. Of course, legislation like this helps address that upfront, so, you know, it keeps it out of our water. So I would like, unless there is further discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we support this moving forward, and we have a second from Commissioner Green.
I was going to second. Yep.
Discussion.
Discussion, Commissioner Hughes.
I just wanted to point out that this has PFAS in it.
It does.
Stikis have PFAS in it, and Teflon and everything else, so we should get rid of it all.
I agree. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes to support House Bill 212. Any other questions, issues, concerns for Mr. Miller? Commissioner Kakari Stone.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Miller, for doing your analysis and this focused overview that you did for us, and I want to thank also Commissioner, I mean County Manager Schaefer and the team for the more in-depth dive of the PFAS, so appreciate this.
Thank you.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kakari Stone, I wanted to let you know too, per your request at the last Commission meeting, I have worked with Daniel, and we do have the list of legislation associated with the different resolutions for legislative priorities up on the 2025 Legislature page of the county website. So I'll be updating those on a regular basis, at least weekly, so if you wanted to check there and see if that is in meanable format, and if there's any changes that you need, we'll definitely work with you to get it to your liking.
Thank you. Commissioner Green, you had something else?
I do, thank you. Just a question, in terms of the budget, are there items that have been in the budget that impact Santa Fe County, whether they're directly to Santa Fe County or to our partners in the nonprofit world or jurisdictions in Santa Fe County, that we might, you know, support and show support at Senate Finance, or things that might have been already stripped out that we need to get put back in at Senate Finance? And the budget seems to be the biggest aspect that we can advocate for in the next few weeks, and I'd like to know what, I mean, that may not be for right now, but definitely if there's some sort of update that we can all go advocate for, that would be wonderful.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, absolutely, just from the brief overview that I did, I see that there's money in there for the New Mexico grown for schools and for senior centers, and that'll benefit our programs that we have in Santa Fe County. And I see that there was funding in there for House Bill 113, which is the Animal Welfare Program and Funds, which is sponsored by Representative Luhon. So I don't have them all today, but definitely I can go through and comb through, see what Santa Fe-specific there are, and then take a broader look and see what agencies and programs we utilize, and just give you the dollar amounts and say, hey, oh, I can also do the comparison about the recommendations. Oh, I can also do the comparison about the recommendations from LFC and the executive to show you where they kind of lined up in the, not the final version, but the final House-approved version.
Wonderful. And then when you talk about the behavioral health and office of the, Office of the Courts and our DA and all these stakeholders that are sort of all a part of this conversation, I'm wondering, maybe it's not something that needs to happen at the next meeting before the end of the session, but if it is, I would take that as a recommendation for us to discuss it in urgency. But if it's something that has a longer time horizon, then maybe that's something that has to come before the board to discuss how we, you know, the county plays as a stakeholder in this whole thing, whether it's the courts, the DAs, the public defenders, all of the different groups that are in that space and how this implementation plan is at least, you know, brought forth to, for the community to discuss, for the county to put their two cents in and to make sure that we're as aware and as hands-on with it, at least in terms of how, you know, that we're in agreement that it's a great plan for our community and for the State District Court Number One.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, I think that's an excellent idea. While I stated that we have a lot of programs underway or ongoing that could definitely benefit from the Behavioral Health Trust Fund funding and the Senate Bill 2 funding, it had been pointed out to me that there are some trainings, for example, for law enforcement and how they deal with behavioral health issues that are not specified within the agency allocations and the overall scheme of, I guess, implementing behavioral health needs throughout all age groups. So I think that providing that information, showing that lack of training, for example, for law enforcement, could be specified and maybe clearly defined as being provided funding in one of the agency allocations.
I love it, you know. Please tell us where we can fill the gaps, you know. We can't solve it all, but we definitely have a role to play in there.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to say one thing just for the public record about House Bill 435 of, that was carried by, that died this morning in its second presentation that was going to provide. And I have to tell you, I was early on in the discussion of creating this particular legislation. It was not intended originally to be a bill. We were asking for best practice, support and direction to the agencies most affected to provide guidance for the situating of, of, they called it alternative energy establishment. I'm going to call it utility scale battery storage. And it turned into a bill that essentially was creating additional regulation, which made it impossible for, in the effort that I made to discuss this with the New Mexico counties and get support, as we do have a super majority of Republicans who aren't going to vote for new regulation. And frankly, in this case, I wouldn't have requested new regulation either. But I do believe that as counties statewide, we will see numerous, you know, some legal issues in the near future. We see them now, we know they're coming. I'm making sure that we're following where things are, but not the details of a particular case. But we do have proposed alternative energy in Sandoval County that will absolutely affect District 3. And the type of guidance that we were looking for from these state agencies would help, would help counties better, be better informed in how we would actually either manage or vote on or make preferences and recommendations for the situating of these. So for House Bill 435 to have died, I'm not surprised. It was written as a regulation, it's poorly written in itself. I'm sorry to hear that. I do hope, for the record, that the state will acknowledge that there is a need to get best practices identified for the placement of battery, utility scale batteries in the interest of addressing our public concerns. Meanwhile, we'll move on. We have, right now, we are to the matters from the county attorney. And I will ask the county attorney what we have in executive session. And go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I'm seeking a motion to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters as allowed by Section 10151 H2 of the Open Meetings Act, threatened or pending litigation in which Santa Fe County is or may become a participant as allowed by Section 10151 H7 of the Open Meetings Act, and discussion of the purchase, acquisition or disposal of real property or water rights as allowed by Section 1015H8 of the Open Meetings Act. And the items of discussion are identified with reasonable specificity in item 12A of the agenda.
Thank you. I overlooked item 11, so I appreciate that. And I'm going to ask for your guidance. We have matters from the county commissioners and other elected officials that I overlooked. If you don't mind, we'll take your...
That's, yeah.
Okay.
You're driving.
Do we have any issues from the commissioners? We'll start with Commissioner Green.
Yeah, thank you. Should have moved faster, yeah. So three quick things here. One, I met with folks from the Espanola community from the east side, including the parts that are parts of Santa Fe County, the Yates-Santa Cruz area over there. We talked about a variety of issues around public safety, fire, parks and rec and ways that Santa Fe County can partner with either the city of Espanola or do things on their, on our own up there. And was happy to have the mayor of Espanola there and Councillor Archuleta Toya, as well as the chief of the Fire Department and one of the lieutenants from the Police Department. And the city manager, Lujan, was on a call there. It was a good two-hour meeting, two-plus hour meeting. And I really appreciated them making the time to be together and to hear, hear what Santa Fe County is doing and for us to be able to discuss what we can do better for them. I will be going to DC on Friday to be a part of the NACO Legislative Summit up there. And I think I'm willing to take issues, for those of you that are not going to be there to our delegation, if I'm lucky enough to meet with the delegation. But if there are things that I can help carry for you all, I'm there to help. Also, on Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday, let me double check, we have an EV rollout for the two, the pilot project for, pardon me for one second, the, sorry, Thursday morning at Eve's Movie Ranch. At 11:00 AM, we are going to be christening the two electric vehicle F-150 Lightnings that the sheriff's office has started testing in their pilot program. They've been well-received, is my understanding, in the beginning. And if you've ever been to the Eve's Movie Ranch, or if you've never been to the Eve's Movie Ranch, it is a great opportunity to see a pretty cool, old, fake Western town. And so let's go out there and, you know, celebrate some new EVs and be the, I think we are the first in the state to have public safety vehicles that are electric vehicles. And honored to have pushed that over the finish line, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes.
Yeah, just a bunch of little things. We met with the community of San Marcos, Camila Bustamante, Commissioner Bustamante and I both met with San Marcos, it overlaps our districts, last week. And that was very interesting. Tomorrow, we take a tour of the Buckman Direct Diversion, those of on the board. A lot of meetings around supportive housing coming up. This February 27th, two days from now, we have 285 Recycles is putting on an event at the Vista Grande Public Library. I'm going to present on the plastics ordinance and others are going to talk about recycling. And I'm finally going to tell which cardboard boxes I can recycle and which ones I can't, hopefully. We're meeting with Vaya Vista on some of their traffic calming concerns. And last but not least, I think the Green Bank, formed as part of the Coalition for Sustainable Communities, is finally up and running, and that's exciting.
Thank you. Commissioner Kukari Stone.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I'll be brief. Tomorrow is Behavioral Health Day at the Legislature, so I hope some of you can get out there. And I will be doing a live radio show with Senate Majority Leader Worth, Mr. Fred Sandoval with the National Latino Behavioral Health Association to discuss the behavioral health reform and the Senate Bill 1, 2 and 3, and the impact to our communities. This is at 2:00 PM, if you want to tune in to Que Suave. Secondly, on Thursday, there is a Know Your Rights Forum with the community at the Henoveva Chavez Community Center from 5:30 to 7:30. This is an excellent demonstration of collaboration with the city of Santa Fe. I was able to meet with the mayor and it's being led by Councillor Alma Castro in collaboration with the Mexican consulate. And I just want to thank our law enforcement and firefighters who are part of this, along with the city, who will all be there and present. It will be monolingual in Spanish. It's limited to 100 persons, so please get the word out. Come at 5:00, the doors open at 5:00. And then we'll have headsets for those who are English-speaking. Finally, I'm actually joining Commissioner Green at NACO. And I thought we were going to do the visits on the Hill together, so we'll collaborate on that. And I look forward to representing us. Hopefully, we can get it on Tuesday. It will be the day on the Hill. And just committee engagement, the Investment Committee met on February 20th, the Santa Fe Solid Waste Management Agency Committee met. We voted a vice chair, so I'll leave that, won't be spoiler alert here. And then Coalition for Sustainable Communities, as always, happy to be an alternate, alternate following Commissioner Hughes. They did a great SWAT analysis. And Thursday is the MPO, but it collides with our Know Your Rights, so I hope to join the first part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Commissioner Kukari Stone mentioned, we met with SWAMA. Commissioner Bustamante was formerly the chair. She vacated her seat for Councillor Lee Garcia, who will be the chair of that board, and I will be the vice chair. I have scheduled my first coffee with the commish, which, as I understand it, is a 16-year tradition. The two former county commissioners before me held these meetings under that title, under that banner. So I am looking forward to continuing that. The topic of that will be fire preparedness in individual neighborhoods. We're beginning with Canyon Cito, and we'll move to Canyada de las Alamos. But we want to acknowledge that District 4 has a lot of rough terrain that is difficult to fight fires in. So I'm also hoping to schedule evacuation drills, and that would be sort of full-scale preparedness events to understand ingress egress issues in particularly tricky neighborhoods. I am interested in, and would like to request, an update, especially for us new commissioners, on the sort of state of water in Santa Fe County. You know, we think about water a lot, but I feel like we are due for a presentation about our surface water availability and also sort of understanding how we make those assessments and how they are backed up. So I would, am requesting that formally in this venue. I am also, kind of as a personal matter, but also as a sort of a county-wide issue, doing some investigative research, and this has to do with water, on the bark beetle, because I have a sinking sensation, feeling that we may experience that this year. So I'm just sort of, if anyone has an interest in thinking through those issues with me, I would be happy to work with you. That's all. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. All I have is the, some brief statements that are about the SWAMA meeting. We did meet with the San Marcos folks, having discussions about roadways and various projects. But I do want to say that the free days and the, so free tire disposal, free electronics, all of those are at the SWAMA website. So that was announced and anyone can go in and see when. Those are not at the county convenience stations, but at the Buckman site, we can actually take on those dates, specific things to be disposed of. And that's all I really have at this point. So since the, do we have any other elected officials online? Or anyone, we don't have anyone in the chambers? No? Okay. We've already heard from the county attorney. I'm not going to ask you to reread that.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay. You don't have to.
Okay, if you want to just proceed back to the item and say, so moved.
Let's go ahead and proceed. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I will make a motion to move into executive session to discuss the items that the county attorney previously mentioned a little while ago.
We have a motion to move to executive session for Commissioner Green and a second by, I was here...
All second, yeah.
By Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, roll call, thank you.
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kukari Stone.
Yes.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Yes. We will be back in approximately 40 minutes.
Three hours.
Madam Chair, I move that we come out of executive session stating that we did not make any decisions and that we only discuss the items that were intended to be discussed.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Hughes. All in, do we have to do a roll call?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are back in session. Okay, two, two, our, public hearings.
Adam 13.
Case number 255,000 Local Foods LLC Spirits Wine and Beer Restaurant B Liquor License.
No.
No? There you go.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission. My name is Maggie Valdez. I'm a Development Review Specialist Senior. Today I bring before you case number 25500 Local Foods LLC Spirits Wine and Beer Restaurant B Liquor License. Local Foods LLC applicants request approval of a spirit wine and beer liquor license. The property is located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6 and his own commercial neighborhood CN within the US 285 South Highway Corridor District Overlay 285 SHCD with its Section 9 Township 15 North Range 10 East Commission District 5. The applicant, the applicant is requesting a restaurant B Spirits Wine and Beer liquor license with on-premises consumption. The restaurant known as Fable Restaurant and Market is the Agora, is in the Agora Shopping Center. The space is approximately 3,250 square feet. The Fable Restaurant will be open from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM and open seven days a week. The address previously had a few different restaurants over the years, all with liquor licenses. The most recent restaurant was Arable, which closed for business in May of 2024. Parking for the customers will be around the shopping center and parking for employees will be in the designated employee parking area of the shopping center. The applicant states, Fable will be full, a full-service restaurant, open for both lunch and dinner seven days a week. We are applying for a restaurant liquor license to sell alcohol to be consumed on-site that complements our menu. The menu will feature local produce and protein sourced directly from the farms and ranchers of the Southern Rocky Sustainable Origins. Drawings on our love of the American West, we are proud to work with small family farms, feature specialty items grown in fresh mountain soil. The property is owned as commercial neighborhood CN with the US, within the US 285 South Highway Corridor District SHCD overlay located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6. The property is located in the overlay community district OCD and regulated by ordinance number 216-9, the Sustainable Land Development Code SLDC, Chapter 9, Section 9.10. US 285 South Highway Corner Corridor District Commercial Neighborhood SHCD CN, Chapter 9, Section 9.10.3.37 Table 9-1012. SHCD use table allows the use within the above-mentioned zoning districts subject to all other applicable standards of the SLDC. The SLDC SHCD use table 9-10-12 allows for a restaurant with incidental consumption of alcoholic beverages as permitted use within the US 285 South Highway Corridor District Commercial Neighborhood overlay. The subject property is owned by Local Foods LLC, a New Mexico limited liability company which is currently under lease with the applicant. The State of, the State Alcohol Beverage and Control Division granted preliminary approval of this request in accordance with Section 60-6B-4 NMSA of the Liquor Control Act. The Liquor Control Act requires the local opinion district board of county commissioners to conduct a public hearing on the request to grant a restaurant beer and wine liquor license at this location. In accordance with the Liquor Control Act, the BCC may disapprove the issuance of this license if the location is within 300 feet of any church or school. The issuance would be in violation of zoning ordinance or the issuance would be determinal to the public health, safety, or morals of the residents of the local option districts. Legal notice of this request has been published in accordance with the Liquor Control Act by publishing notice before the hearing twice in the Santa Fe, New Mexican on January 24, 2025 and February 10, 2025. A complete application was submitted on January 15, 2025. The applicant has met the State of New Mexico requirements for noticing. The site is .19 miles, 1,000 feet from the nearest church and .19 miles, 1,000 feet from the nearest school. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of a restaurant B Spirits Wine and Beer liquor license to be located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87508. Madam Chair, Commission, I stand for questions.
Do we have any questions?
Commissioner Hughes? Well, I'm very familiar with the location, but it's fine with me. I think we should go to public hearing.
Okay, did we want to ask any questions of the applicant before we go to public hearing?
I don't have any questions.
No questions for the applicant? Okay, do we have anyone in the chambers opposed to this? Anyone in favor who would like to speak to the application? Seeing and hearing none? Do we have a motion? No questions, considerations?
I move to approve restaurant B Spirits Wine and Beer Liquor License to be located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87508. And I look forward to the restaurant opening and hope it's good.
Second, and I hope it's good too.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hughes, a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Okay, back to item 12.
Chair and chair and members of the commission, I think the manager Schaefer stepped out to make sure that the resolution and the exhibits are in line for the vote. So I don't know whether there are any other items to cover for, for the rest of the meeting, but might need to take a short moment to make sure that that's up on board docs before we take a vote on the resolution.
Okay, are there any announcements that anyone would like to make while we're waiting for Commissioner, I mean for manager Schaefer? Okay, manager Schaefer is here. We return to, is it up on board docs? Item B.
I don't even see it in board docs.
It is being uploaded as we speak. I apologize for the delay.
As the draft resolution and the property is noted in exhibit A to the resolution.
And it has an exhibit A and exhibit B subject resolution? Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, that is correct. Chair Bustamante.
Does everyone see it?
Not yet.
Item 12B?
Yes.
Okay, and B.
Exhibit B?
It was, it's 30:00 PM. Yes, right here, exhibit A, subject resolution, exhibit A to the subject resolution. And it has, the exhibit A has the property owner's names with the easement acreage.
That is correct. Chair Bustamante, and so there are three properties in total that are listed on exhibit A to the subject resolution.
Is there any discussion regarding this? Would you like to, if we could have you, for the record, manager Schaefer, the resolution and the intent?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. We are pursuant to agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation responsible for acquiring real property interests for the Pawke Basin Regional Water System. We have endeavored over a period of months to reach agreement with the property owners for the permanent public utility easements. And we are at the point in which the needs of the project require that we be able to move forward with condemnation proceedings so as not to interfere with the timely completion of this phase of the Pawke Basin Regional Water System. As reflected on the exhibit, the area at issue for the public, permanent public, permanent utility easement, excuse me, is quite small, ranging from .0046 of an acre up to .0809 of an acre. We are, you know, offering fair market value for these small permanent utility easements. And in addition, we believe that the construction of the Pawke Basin Regional Water System and the water line running adjacent to these properties with fire hydrants will, in fact, likely increase or at least maintain the value of these properties. And again, this request is being made after many months of trying to reach final resolution. In some instances, we've been unable to make final contact or get mortgage companies to release the mortgage. And again, we are at the point where the project requires that we move forward expeditiously. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's the background and intent of the resolution. And as always, our hope is that we'll be able to avoid condemnation proceedings by entering into mutually agreeable purchase agreements with these property owners. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, manager Schaefer. Do we have any questions for manager Schaefer?
I'm chair, pardon?
Madam Chair, I move that we come out of executive session stating that we did not make any decisions and that we only discuss the items that were intended to be discussed.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Hughes. All in, do we have to do a roll call?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are back in session. Okay, two, two, our, public hearings.
Adam 13.
Case number 255,000 Local Foods LLC Spirits Wine and Beer Restaurant B Liquor License.
No.
No? There you go.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission. My name is Maggie Valdez. I'm a Development Review Specialist Senior. Today I bring before you case number 25500 Local Foods LLC Spirits Wine and Beer Restaurant B Liquor License. Local Foods LLC applicants request approval of a spirit wine and beer liquor license. The property is located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87508. Madam Chair, Commission, I stand for questions.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Hughes?
Well, I'm very familiar with the location, but it's fine with me. I think we should go to public hearing.
Okay, did we want to ask any questions of the applicant before we go to public hearing?
I don't have any questions.
No questions for the applicant? Okay, do we have anyone in the chambers opposed to this? Anyone in favor who would like to speak to the application? Seeing and hearing none? Do we have a motion? No questions, considerations?
I move to approve restaurant B Spirits Wine and Beer Liquor License to be located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87508. And I look forward to the restaurant opening and hope it's good.
Second, and I hope it's good too.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hughes, a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
I too hope it's good. Motion passes because I'll be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Okay, back to item 12.
Chair and, chair and members of the commission, I think the manager Schaefer stepped out to, to make sure that the resolution and the exhibits are in line for the vote. So I don't know whether there are any other items to cover for, for the rest of the meeting, but might need to take a short moment to make sure that that's up on board docs before we take a vote on the resolution.
Okay, are there any announcements that anyone would like to make while we're waiting for Commissioner, I mean for manager Schaefer? Okay, no, manager Schaefer is here. We return to, is it up on board docs? Item B.
Oh, you might have it not here.
Number 2. No?
I don't even see it in board docs.
It is being uploaded as we speak. I apologize for the delay.
As the draft resolution and the property is noted in exhibit A to the resolution.
And it has an exhibit A and an exhibit B subject resolution? Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, that is correct. Chair Bustamante.
Does everyone see it?
Not yet.
Item 12B? Yes, okay, and B.
Is it exhibit B?
It was, it's 30:00 PM. Yes, right here, exhibit A, subject resolution, exhibit A to the subject resolution. And it has, the exhibit A has the property owner's names with the easement acreage.
That is correct. Chair Bustamante, and so there are three properties in total that are listed on exhibit A to the subject resolution.
Is there any discussion regarding this? Would you like to, if we could have you, for the record, manager Schaefer, the resolution and the intent?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. We are pursuant to agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation responsible for acquiring real property interests for the Pawke Basin Regional Water System. We have endeavored over a period of months to reach agreement with the property owners for the permanent public utility easements. And we are at the point in which the needs of the project require that we be able to move forward with condemnation proceedings so as not to interfere with the timely completion of this phase of the Pawke Basin Regional Water System. As reflected on the exhibit, the area at issue for the public, permanent public, permanent utility easement, excuse me, is quite small, ranging from .0046 of an acre up to .0809 of an acre. We are, you know, offering fair market value for these small permanent utility easements. And in addition, we believe that the construction of the Pawke Basin Regional Water System and the water line running adjacent to these properties with fire hydrants will, in fact, likely increase or at least maintain the value of these properties. And again, this request is being made after many months of trying to reach final resolution. In some instances, we've been unable to make final contact or get mortgage companies to, to release the mortgage. And again, we are at the point where the project requires that we move forward expeditiously. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's the background and intent of the resolution. And as always, our hope is that we'll be able to avoid condemnation proceedings by entering into mutually agreeable purchase agreements with these property owners. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, manager Schaefer. Do we have any questions for manager Schaefer? Do we have your motion?
Madam Chair, pardon me, just as a comment, and I will end up making the motion at the end of my comments, but just, just to reiterate manager Schaefer's comments that a lot of communication has gone, attempted communication has gone forward to try to negotiate, it has been, the proposal has been above fair
to be located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87508. Madam Chair, Commission, I stand for questions.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Hughes?
Well, I'm very familiar with the location, but it's fine with me. I think we should go to public hearing.
Okay. Did we want to ask any questions of the applicant before we go to public hearing?
I don't have any questions.
No questions for the applicant? Okay. Do we have anyone in the chambers opposed to this? Anyone in favor who would like to speak to the application? Seeing and hearing none? Do we have a motion? No questions, considerations?
I move to approve Restaurant B Spirits Wine and Beer Liquor License to be located at 7 Avenida Vista Grande Suite B6, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87508, and I look forward to the restaurant opening and hope it's good.
Second, and I hope it's good too.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hughes, a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I too hope it's good. Motion passes because I'll be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Okay, back to item 12.
Chair and members of the commission, I think the manager Schaefer stepped out to make sure that the resolution and the exhibits are in line for the vote. So I don't know whether there are any other items to cover for the rest of the meeting, but might need to take a short moment to make sure that that's up on board docs before we take a vote on the resolution.
Okay. Are there any announcements that anyone would like to make while we're waiting for Commissioner? I mean for Manager Schaefer? Okay. Manager Schaefer is here. We return to?
Is he up on board docs?
Item B.
Uh, oh, you might have missed it.
Number two.
I don't even see it in the board docs.
It is being uploaded as we speak. I apologize for the delay.
That's the draft resolution, and the property is noted in Exhibit A to the resolution.
And it has an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B subject resolution? Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, that is correct. Chair Bustamante.
Okay. Does everyone see it?
Not yet.
Under 12B? Yes. Okay. And B?
Is it Exhibit B?
It was -- it's 30 p.m. Yep. Yes, right here. Exhibit A, subject resolution, Exhibit A to the subject resolution. And it has, Exhibit A has the property owners' names with the easement acreage.
That is correct. Chair Bustamante, and so there are three properties in total that are listed on Exhibit A to the subject resolution.
Is there any discussion regarding this? Would you like to, if we could have you, for the record, Manager Schaefer, the resolution and the intent?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. We are pursuant to agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation responsible for acquiring real property interests for the Pawke Basin Regional Water System. We have endeavored over a period of months to reach agreement with the property owners for the permanent public utility easements, and we are at the point in which the needs of the project require that we be able to move forward with condemnation proceedings so as not to interfere with the timely completion of this phase of the Pawke Basin Regional Water System. As reflected on the exhibit, the area at issue for the public, permanent public, permanent utility easement, excuse me, is quite small, ranging from .0046 of an acre up to .0809 of an acre. We are, you know, offering fair market value for these small permanent utility easements, and in addition, we believe that the construction of the Pawke Basin Regional Water System and the water line running adjacent to these properties with fire hydrants will, in fact, likely increase or at least maintain the value of these properties. And again, this request is being made after many months of trying to reach final resolution. In some instances, we've been unable to make final contact or get mortgage companies to release the mortgage. And again, we are at the point where the project requires that we move forward expeditiously. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's the background and intent of the resolution. And as always, our hope is that we'll be able to avoid condemnation proceedings by entering into mutually agreeable purchase agreements with these property owners. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Do we have any questions for Manager Schaefer? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, pardon me. Just as a comment, and I will end up making the motion at the end of my comments, but just to reiterate Manager Schaefer's comments that a lot of communication has gone, attempted communication has gone forward to try to negotiate. It has been, the proposal has been above fair market value, if only just marginally, but also to include if damage to a wall or any physical structure needs to happen, that the county would replace that. Again, this is only for easements. This is not taking of property, but just for easements. So it does not restrict somebody's development rights significantly. And the fact that the water supply in the area provides a sustainable and a long-term water, fresh water, treated water system for these residents as well as fire safety, fire hydrants in the area, which will go a long way towards reducing their insurance costs in the future, which seem to be of bigger impact to our constituents all across Santa Fe County. So with that, I will make a motion in support of a resolution authorizing the county attorney to initiate and prosecute condemnation proceedings to acquire specified real property interests for the Pawke Basin Regional Water System as described in Exhibit A of the item, of item 12B in the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number, please.
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-027.
027. Thank you very much. Any further issues, reports? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
See you in a couple weeks.
Aye.
Aye.